Ms. Zirinsky, will you listen? Okay. Ms. Kuzak, lead us, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's Lori? Call call, please.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Kuzak.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Mr. Lot. Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present except Mr. Lot.
Approval of the minutes November 16, 2023, November 14, 21st of 2023, budget hearing. Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor? Pose. Courtesy of the floor. Mr. Stephen Barron Jr.
Did I write you?
You most certainly did. That's why I emphasize.
Good evening, members of council. I'm speaking today, or arise today, to speak today about your planning commission. I'm going to emphasize your, just like Mrs. Bradley does, when she comes here each year to ask you for more money. She's not in the audience tonight, but I think you would appreciate it, and it will lend some clarity to what I am about to talk to you about relating to your planning commission. So last meeting, I spoke about salaries, not knowing council had received the salaries of your planning commission, and I also received those salaries from a member of council, and I found them very interesting. So I feel that some context might be warranted. So the total salaries for your planning commission was $1.5 million in 2021. 1.5 million.
For how many people, for how many positions?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five, hasn't changed. The planned total salaries for your planning commission in 2024 is $2.3 million, which is over $820,673, or a 34.3% increase, 34.3% increase over three years. Your planning commission also has five people that are paid over $100,000. Three more are paid over $90,000. Ms. Bradley makes $186,252.88, and she's paid with public money, so I don't mind saying what her salary is, just like I said mine at last meeting. That is more than both county executives combined, combined. Employees of your planning commission have argued to me that Ms. Bradley's salary is low in the marketplace. This isn't true. If you look at leaders of this type and look at these planning commissions, some are private, some are private-public, and like our planning commission, it's largely funded, and I believe it's entirely funded, by public money. Since your planning commission is funded by public money, the true range of salary for Ms. Bradley is between $100,000 per year and $169,000 per year. Now, some private planning commissions give somewhere between $35,000 a year and $65,000 a year in additional pay and incentives, like profit sharing and things of that nature. But Ms. Bradley is even paid above the average salary in that situation, which is $130,384, or $85, per year, and she's even higher than the mean, $176,656. Your planning commission is also moving. A lot has been made about that. The triple net least is costing $12,000 a year. That's in the 2024 budget. But there is also an additional $1.3 million in 2024 for new equipment and office improvements, $1.3 million. What is wrong with your commission's current equipment? What is your current commission spending this $1.3 million on? Your commission has also been upset over the county not funding the match for the Eastern PA Regional Freight Alliance Plan. Your planning commission has been telling people Northampton County does not pay its fair share. I know you've all got those emails. You've heard from Ms. Bradley about this. Councilman Myers will recall stating that council will pay for these types of programs, just not blanket funds that would not be in the best interest of Northampton County. He said that at the end of last year. Mrs. Bradley mentioned on May 4 of this year about how much she needed for this, for this study, and a budget amendment was put forward for that as well. So your planning commission, all they needed to do was send an invoice like they did on 10/17/2023, and your planning commission would have been paid the $10,732 needed for the match in year one. They will be paid before the end of the year because they have sent it, and it's part of the 2023 budget. The county executive has been very, very clear, for all the reasons I have laid out here, that the current budgeted amount for your planning commission still makes good sense for the taxpayers of this county. However, beyond that, we might need to replace your planning commission with our planning commission. Okay? To start exploring options that are better for the Northampton County citizens if we have to put in this $95,000. If the planning commission needs $95,000 additional dollars, Northampton County taxpayer money, it's really easy. Instead of paying $1.3 million for new equipment and the build out of their building, they should just pay $1.2 million. And now I have balanced their budget for them, and they don't need money from Northampton County, additional money from Northampton County. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Glenn Geisinger. State your name, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Glenn Geisinger. I'm from Penn Argele, Pennsylvania. I have stood before you after the recent election with my concerns regarding the conduct of that election. I stand before you again because a number of items still seem to be unresolved, or there is no direction that is being given by the administration on these items. And as the governing body of this particular county, I see that you have a proposed resolution tonight on your agenda for which I am grateful. I appreciate your work on this. I hope that as you work on this, there are four items that you will specifically address, and this is not a partisan issue. This is the integrity of our elections. Each and every one of you sits here because of the fact that people voted for you. You want those votes to count regardless of who they are for. You want them to be counted accurately, and I hope that this recommendation that I make to you is taken accordingly. I would ask that an independent audit of this previous election be performed. I realize you hold the purse strings. I realize it's not an inexpensive thing to do. But I hope that the integrity of our elections are worth whatever amount of money is necessary for a third-party independent audit. I would ask that the administration be directed, along with the work of the Elections Commission, to have a written plan for 2024, details of exactly how they are going to go about ensuring that these kinds of failures that have occurred in the past do not occur again. A phase-out of the current EXVL machines. I would ask that this occur prior to the primary, but I realize that that is probably a very difficult and unrealistic request. But I cannot stand in good conscience before you, thinking that with the errors that have occurred in the past, that we can go into the general election of 2024 with the same machines that have caused us so much difficulty. And finally, an explanation of how the reconciled and certified election, how the election was certified when the audit trail itself and the election results do not match. It's that simple. I have photographic evidence. I was there at the post-election canvas when the certification occurred. And regardless of this being a quote clerical error, the numbers that are on the audit trail that were submitted to the Secretary of State and the numbers that were on the election do not match. Therefore, I do not understand why the county solicitor directed the Elections Commission to certify that election. There's no way it could be. These are the things that I ask that you consider, and I appreciate your efforts to ensure election integrity in the county of Northampton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jackie Edwards. Not here. Bianca Sanchez.
I'm here.
You can speak. And you didn't want to speak?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Bruce Haynes.
He wants to speak.
What's the matter?
You have five minutes. Would you tell your name and address, please? Yeah, no, I haven't seen him yet. You can share mine.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes to just remind you all. I, I'm here to beg again, like I did a year ago, I guess, to ask for your support for hotel tax, the annual hotel tax for, to be used to promote the Historic Bethlehem. And what I passed out was just to kind of bring you up to speed. Back in 2018, the hotel came forward and participated basically to fund, through the 2005 hotel tax, to fund the World Heritage. Well, we'd just been put on the tentative list for World Heritage, and once we got on the tentative list, it was our desire to go ahead and market, just being on the tentative list, made us authenticated the quality of the history in Historic Bethlehem. And so the funding came from the hotel tax to do both marketing, even before we get World Heritage, and then to set up the pot of funds in order to hopefully actually get the World Heritage designation. So, so that pot of money was used to do branding, and we worked with Miles Partnership and with that, with the hotel 2005 money to create the brand of Visit Historic Bethlehem, One Square Mile, One Dozen First, Authentic Colonial History on a Top Ten Main Street. And the concept was to brand us as a tourist destination for the heritage travelers, those looking for history, and essentially to target the travelers that are going to Colonial Williamsburg, Charleston, Savannah, Alexandria, Virginia, Sturbridge Village, Massachusetts, et cetera. So I know last time, most of you were here in the committee meeting where an amendment was put forward, which hopefully you'll be voting favorably on tonight to add $60,000 to $15,000 that's in the hotel tax budget to take us up to $75,000 to do a marketing campaign in 2024. Last year, at this meeting, you all approved nine-nothing. I really appreciate it. Seventy-two thousand five hundred. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to tell you, and by the way, that, that funding is matched one-third by the Hotel Bethlehem. So 75,000 would be matched 25,000, and was this year by the hotel. The hotel charges nothing against administrative fees. All of the funds that the hotel puts in are actually paid by the hotel for actual marketing. And so this, I show you on the second page just to give you an example. The old fat guy there is me, out at the airport, and this happens to be part of the branding we did this year from, not from the grant, but this was the hotel match money, where we took the, the brand, if you will, and we're using, we're out at the airport in the arriving area of the airport just before you turn to go to baggage claim. And right there is the Visit Historic Bethlehem and our whole logo, pretty much the same thing that I handed out. We're very prominent there. There's a QR code, takes you to the website. And then the website, of course, once we click on the website, the goal is get people to then decide, to make a decision, not right away, because this is about branding, to hopefully sign up to come to Bethlehem. This whole marketing campaign is not a local campaign. It's a national campaign. We start ninety, we start 50 miles in a 50-mile radius outside of Bethlehem and target up and down the East Coast, down to Florida, to California, specific states, targeting people that we think are candidates. So just one, so really quick, I just want to say that this campaign this year was phenomenal, and I thank you for funding us in '23. It's really the first year after COVID that we actually got out there to brand. Our Google click-through rates were 15%. Basically, the industry, the destination marketing industry average is 10%. So we were doing 50% better than the, the destination marketing organizations in all those towns that I talked to you about. Our Facebook campaign was even more successful. It was incredible. We created some great videos, and those videos really hit a home run. We were getting, you get, click-through rates were 5%, and the DMO average is 1%. So we were five times the average. The bottom line is, we generated 132, with this year's dollars. We spent 80% with Google and Facebook.
Time, wrap it up.
I'm sorry. Time's up. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, we, we got 132 visitors that hit the website, and at the end of the day, if 10% of them come, we would generate from the hotel tax $260,000, and it would be essentially a self-funding campaign and contributing more money for other organizations. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That's why I went over.
That's okay. Mr. Matt Muncie. State your name, you have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Matt Muncie of Easton, Pennsylvania. I am the Chair of the Northampton County Democratic Committee. Last time, I believe I came before a number of you was after a similar problematic election four years ago, and we're faced with a similar situation this time. I want to echo some of my counterpart, Mr. Geisinger's comments, and I agree with him that this should not be a partisan issue. And I apologize that I was not at your last meeting. I had longstanding plans that evening, but I, I don't want it to be mistaken that Democrats are not similarly concerned about preserving the, the integrity and really overall the confidence in our elections, which, as, as you all know, is a bedrock of our democracy. A couple points. I, I think an independent investigation would be particularly helpful to restore confidence, and that means having an investigation by an outside body. There are groups such as the Election Assistance Commission that can help either perform or to refer to the appropriate people to do an investigation. But it would help because it wouldn't be, the, the people providing information or doing the investigation would not have any particular benefit from, from minimizing any, any concerns or minimizing problems that happened. In addition to that, one thing I want to, want to add is that you may want to request a briefing on the legal issues from the election and some of the things that, that happened in that election and since that election. As Mr. Geisinger alluded to, there were, there's a mismatch because of the, the problem that everyone is, is aware of and has been, been told about. There's a mismatch on what was printed on the poll tapes and when those were reconciled with the results, the same results that we see on the, that are on the website. And there's a process during the canvas where those are reconciled, and the question is, was there any legal authority to consider that mismatch to be okay? Was, did the Department of State give guidance? Was there legal authority from a court? Because when that's, when that's done, I think we, we need to make sure that everything is done properly and that that has been cross-checked to the letter of the law, because if we don't, unfortunately, we're giving fuel to conspiracy theorists, to those who, who think the worst about elections or that somehow we're not, we're not maintaining the integrity of our elections. So in that vein, I, I share the concerns of Mr. Geisinger, and I think it's appropriate for this body to act. I appreciate the formation of an election committee to, to look more broadly. But I think while this election is still fresh in everyone's mind, we've gone through a second problem with the same, the same voting system and machines that we had four years ago. And I think we need to do more than simply expect assurances are going to provide the confidence that our voters need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Amili.
Good evening, council. Mike Amili, Nazareth, Pennsylvania. As you may recall, last month, the LVTS voted to adopt the Long Range Transportation Plan, which is the 25-year plan for transportation funding within the region. The county executive, who, serving in his capacity as the Chair of the LVTS Coordinating Committee, was the sole no vote to adopt that plan. And under that long-range plan, only 18% of the funding was dedicated exclusively to projects located within Northampton County. This week, the LVTS started holding a series of workshops to update the Transportation Improvement Program, which is the, the four-year period between 2025 and 2028. Under this current draft tip, roughly 36% of the funding is allocated to transit for Atlanta projects. 17% is allocated to regional projects that span both counties. 37% is dedicated solely to projects in Lehigh County, and only 10% is dedicated to projects in Northampton County. Many of the priorities that we have been advocating for over the years are either mired in the preliminary phases of engineering, with construction still several years away, or we've simply been told that we need to wait for future developments and to study the impacts of that development before we can take action. So while this draft tip is still being revised, the needle is only going to move so far on that, and the funding inequities that we've been voicing concerns over for the past couple of years just continue to worsen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who would like to approach and speak to council at this time? If you do, step forward, give your name. If not, we're going to move on. Mr. McClure. Could we have a report from the county exec?
You have a lot of work to do tonight, so if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but if not, I'll dispense with my report.
Mr. Kuzak has his hand up.
I had one question.
Sure.
My understanding is that the previous Director of Administration was the emergency county executive. Have you appointed someone to fill that position, and if so, who would that be?
Well, so it is true that the charter does contemplate, in the event of the disability or unavailability of the county executive, the Director of Administration is the acting county executive with all the powers of the county executive, except the veto. So I have drafted an executive order to deal with that situation, and currently, Mr. Barron would serve as the acting county executive if I became disabled or unable to complete my duties. You're welcome.
Any other questions for the county exec?
It's news to him, by the way. I didn't tell him.
We could see by the reaction in the back. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Gofredo.
Mr. McClure, can you speak to Mr. Muncie and Mr. Geisinger's concerns about the certification or the certification of the election and how that process went down?
Absolutely, I can. There is a legal process by which you challenge an, an election, and nobody filed a challenge to the election. So necessarily, the election was lawfully conducted.
What about the mismatch with the votes from the state?
So, so you understand the, what happened with that. There was a clerical error in Omaha. Right.
The clerical error.
Yes, sir. There was a clerical error in Omaha, and the vote that was re-tabulated was correct. So Pinella's votes were correctly tabulated. Stabeel's votes were correctly tabulated. That means counted. And I wasn't saying that for your benefit. I was saying that for YouTube land. So the, what the error was, was the clerical error caused in Omaha, which was simply data entry into an Excel, essentially an Excel spreadsheet, that showed on the paper ballot printout the votes being assigned incorrectly. But the actual recordation of the vote and the tabulation, all was proper for Pinella through the process, and all was proper for Stabeel through the process. And had anybody filed a challenge, as the law requires, that would have been demonstrated in court.
Okay, so it's a position of the county that the, everything was followed lawfully as far as the certification of the election.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Executive, I think I, looking at Mr. Barron's face when you said that, I would be very careful if he brings you something to eat or drink. You might want to have a taster. That's all. That's all I have.
I think you just lost the meeting. If we don't have any more questions, thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Heckman, for that knowledge. Old business. Public hearing on an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the 2023 Northampton County Budget, County-Wide Salary, Fringe Benefit, Community, Economic Development, Fiscal Affairs, Balancing of the Budget Administration, Emergency Management, Coroner, Human Services, Homeless Assistant Development Fund, Grants, Children, Youth, and Family, Health Choices, Mental Health Developmental Programs, Early Intervention Drug and Alcohol, Opioid Settlement." This was introduced by Ms. Zirinsky and Mr. Kuzak at the November 16 meeting. If there's any public comment at this point, we'll take it. If not, any discussion from anybody on council? Mr. Kuzak.
Just a, a quick point. It would have been nice, prior to voting on this, had we received the Q3 financials unaudited, and my understanding is that it was requested and it was not forthcoming. So my hope is that next year, this practice does not continue. Thank you.
Anybody else? Call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzak.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Public hearing of the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Ordinance Number 44-2006," also known as the ordinance providing for rules and regulations for a Northampton County Council meeting. Mr. Heckman and Mr. Giovanni introduce this November 16 meeting. Is there any comment from the public? Any comment from council? Yes, you can, Mr. Heckman.
Yes, I, over the last few years, I thought at times the meeting sort of got off the rails. It's no one person's fault at all. We're a body of nine, and as much as we may disagree with each other or have issues on, on various topics, I think that it's, I might turn off my mic. Hammered. It's important to have, or at least reinforce, certain rules. And over the years that I've been on, generally, when you have a body like this, a great deal depends on courtesy, a great deal depends on mutual respect, and, and, and back and forth. And I, and the problem is, whenever you get into rules, you don't want it to be a straitjacket or a weapon. And of course, that can happen, but you do need some sort of order for things to get done and to have a meeting that, that accomplishes what it's supposed to. So with that in mind, I started looking at things and reading through the administrative code, and I, I realized a lot of work had already been done for me by Mr. McClure and Mr., Mr. Bronco back, I think it was 2004. And so I really didn't have a lot to write. I saw a few places where I wanted to beef it up, and really, there's a few, the couple sections. First section, of course, is First section, of course, is Code of Civility. And I think if you were to read that and go through it, I don't think you'd really have any problem with what's already there. I think it's important, though, that, just like with the charter and the administrative code, if you're on council, you read it. And I did make some changes, which I'll highlight. And I also then realized I had to change something as well, because I, the way I wrote it, it was too clunky, and I needed it to be cleaned up. If you look at the ordinance, you see it stops at K, but then I've added L, M, N, and O. L being the president or presiding officer should serve as the chief parliamentary officer of the county council. All questions of procedure will be directed to the president. M, any questions or communication from council members to the council solicitor and/or council clerk shall be directed to and recognized by the president or presiding officer. N, well, I'm going to jump over N for now and go to O. Any member of council can move to suspend the rules of order for a specific topic being discussed if such motion is made, seconded, and passed by majority vote. The president can limit debate on the issue once all members of council have had at least one opportunity to comment prior to the debate being ended. Now, on N, you can read it, and after I read it a couple of times, I can understand why somebody would say, what exactly are you trying to say there? So I'm proposing an amendment to that. And that really is the core, by the way, of the changes. I don't really have anything, I mean, the other, if you go through it, then it talks about meeting conduct, and point of privilege, point of procedure, and it tells you may interrupt the speaker, may not, whether it's debatable or not. And all of that's fine. I know I've been told that there was a possibility, some people coming in might want to adopt Robert's Rules of Order as our official guidelines. I didn't bring my Robert Rules of Order book. It's about the ethic. I have my old hand, one little hand copy that I kept in my coat, and frankly, I can't find it anymore. I had it here for years. But I don't want, the rules should be here to expedite the meeting and give everybody a chance on this board to express their concerns, opinions on a topic, but do so in an orderly fashion. I don't, I worry, worry about council members coming on and having to memorize Robert's Rules of Order. People come on here, it's a part-time board, and it's wonderful if people run for local office. You've heard me talk about that a lot. And I think you need to understand the Home Rule Charter first and foremost. You need to understand the administrative code, and then to throw in, oh, and by the way, you should really know the Robert's Rules of Order. And as time has gone on, I get concerned that sometimes things can be used, as I said, not so much as a device of order, but as a device to stop something somebody doesn't like, or to interfere with the orderly process. So, that being said, I have an amendment for N, and I'm going to introduce it this time, Mr. President.
Chris E.
Thank you. As opposed to what's there now, I'd like to replace it with, electronic or written communication with council members regarding agenda items during debate and discussion is prohibited unless disclosed as public comment. So that's about as simple as I can make it. And I think that's more direct and to the point than what I was trying to say. Sure, certainly. For the record. All right. Electronic or written communication with council members regarding agenda items during debate and discussion is prohibited unless disclosed as public comment. Now, we've had more than a few issues where the solicitor has advised us, and this is new to me. The Sunshine Act is stricter now than it was in the past. And frankly, anytime we're in discussion or debate mode, any communications with council members should be public. It doesn't say you can't get something, but you're going to have to, you should disclose. Now, I was asked, well, how do you enforce any of this? Which, you know, it's a fair question. I mean, I'm sure it was asked back in 2004, when this was written. And there is a section, Discipline. And basically, this is all about our own personal codes of honor and integrity, despite it being questioned. I would say that it talks about how a member would apologize, or a motion to leave the meeting, or censure, and so on and so forth. But I mean, at the end of the day, it's really up to the individuals, at least themselves, based on this. And I would hope that you would favorably consider my amendment, and then the entire ordinance. And I was happy that it was put forth as a bipartisan measure by myself and Mr. Giovanni. And that's all I'm going to say. If anybody wants to ask me anything, I'm fine with that.
Is there a second on this?
I was going to ask, is there a second on this amendment?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do you not have to discuss?
Discussion on the change in the amendment from council. Questions? Discussion?
I would, just something that came up in the past, any communication would also be subject to a right-to-no request, wouldn't it? So I think that's something to keep in mind. If there would in fact be communication, either via text message, written, smoke signals, all are subject to an open records or right-to-no request. So that's something to consider as we vote on this.
Well, and in reference, if I may, I, you're right, and I think that sometimes, as I said with the Robert's Rules, people come in, you get elected, you're pumped up, ready to go, and you may not realize what is or isn't subject to that. And this, I think, at least says, hey, you should be doing this. And yes, part of it is, and sure, somebody could do, make that open records, and you'd be subject to providing whatever information was given to you. But again, this is, it's not saying you can't communicate. It's saying during debate and discussion of council members, that's what it is, debate and discussion by council members. Public debate's over, everything's over, unless you ask something of, let's say, an administrative official, and you, and the president or presiding officer approves, that that's different, because that'll be public. But that's it, yes. And I would hope that that would be taken as an understanding that just about everything we do is subject to.
Ms. Zirinsky.
That already exists, though, regardless of whether or not this passes. Any communication we have, on your phone, via computer, even if it's on your personal device, is subject to right-to-no request. So this doesn't make that so. I'm just wondering, so I just wanted to be clear on that, that this doesn't enhance that in any way. It's just kind of calling out that you shouldn't be doing this.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comment? Let's roll on the amendment.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzak.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Let's move on to the ordinance. Consideration ordinance, any discussion on that? As amended? Yes, Mr. Brown?
I'd like to point out that in the draft that we have under Order of Business, that prayer has been strike out, is from the meeting. Or regular and special meetings, Northampton County shall be conducted according to the following Order of Business. Prayer initially, and then followed by pledge allegiance, roll call, so on and so forth. Prayer is being struck. I understand that we have not followed that, but I object to that being removed. Whether you're religious or not, even a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting in respect for prayer, I think, would be appropriate. So as long as this exists as being removed, I will not support the amendments going forth. So my amendment would be to reinstate prayer as the, remove the strikeout and reinstate prayer at the opening, beginning of the meetings. So I'll put that forth as an amendment.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I would like to discuss.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Prayer denotes something that's very specific to, more like Judeo-Christian religions. A moment of silence could be appropriate if that was articulated. We do have a separation of church and state. We should not be favoring any one form of silence, or meditation, or acknowledgement. And I think that the word prayer is very, very specific in what it's signaling. And a lot of people don't, many people don't pray. But acknowledging a moment of silence is something that everybody could do. It's more inclusive, is what I'm trying to say. I will not be supporting that.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, let me speak to that, because my main point were the things I discussed. Prayer ended up getting stricken, stricken, a word? You're fine, Kyle. You know, it's been a long time. So in discussions with our staff, looking over the entire document, that came up as an issue. Now, personally, I didn't even notice or recognize it, and I looked at it, and I think, I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Brown. I mean, I don't have a problem. As a good Catholic altar boy, I don't want to get my knuckles wrapped. So I mean, if people want to pray, by all means, pray. Now, I know that's a, become more of a hot-button issue. I really, to me, the idea of the prayer is not something that I'm going to argue or debate or discuss. I'll let others do that. I have no problem if the prayer stays or the prayer goes. It was after discussion, some of which would allude to what you brought up, Ms. Zirinsky. I think the prayer has been used throughout the years at times, and other times not. We've had the Ten Commandments put up on the wall at one time, and honestly, none of that really bothers me. I mean, it wouldn't bother me if somebody laid a Quran on the dais. I think everybody has a right to anything they want to do. If council as a whole were to say, put the prayer back on, I'm not going to sit here and argue against it. I've just, it just came up as a discussion and said, okay, since no one has done a prayer, and we haven't followed it, and actually, some of these things we haven't followed either, in so long, I mean, you don't see anything that says executives report on here. And I was going to address that, but there's some things we could address, but I thought we'd wait till the next year with the new people coming in. But I just wanted to make it clear, I did not specifically look for getting rid of the prayer. And I don't know how the rest of council feels. I appreciate what your feelings are, Ms. Zirinsky, but it's not something that I, I'm more in favor of the other things.
Can I just rebut that?
All right.
Why do you need to rebut it? Do you want to respond?
No, I mean.
Respond?
Yes.
Can I respond? I'm sorry. Using debate terms, and maybe that's not appropriate. But the point of the matter was, was it's not whether it's good for you specifically, or good for anybody here, it's, does it belong in a public document that should be universally accepted by everybody and inclusive in the language? There's many parts of documents that we have that refer to only him, or her, like, not even acknowledging that a female could have the role, or something like that. So being in a government document where you're dictating how a meeting should run should acknowledge universal patterns of inclusivity, not necessarily favoring one. And for many people, that word isn't going to bother them, because the majority of people here probably were raised in some form of Christian religion or Judeo-Christian. But there are thousands of religions. And so prayer doesn't necessarily acknowledge the diversity and inclusive nature that the government document that we have in front of us should be promoting.
Okay, Mr. Gofredo.
Can you give me an example of a major religion that doesn't recognize prayer as prayer? I'm just thinking Judea, Judaism, Christianity, and Muslim, or Islam, all consider prayer to be prayer. So it's like, I don't see this as denominational. I see it as, hey, here's a chance to have a moment of silence before we do a council meeting, which.
Think of a moment of silence.
Can get contentious, and I think it's a, it's a nice thought, and it doesn't need to be done every time, but if somebody, the president, has something, or if somebody on council wants to have something brought to the attention before, I think that's a great opportunity to do it. I don't see it being a problem. I wish it was brought to our attention earlier, that it was even there. It was nice. Well, I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying, I didn't know it was there, because we never did it. And I think it would be, especially during these divided times, it's nice to have an idea like that being part of the tradition of the council meeting.
Mr. Kuzak.
Yeah, what I would say is, in the past, we have had outside clergy come in and perform the prayer, and I thought, I learned a lot about our community when that was done. And for that reason, I would like to see it stay in, but what I would also, what I would like to see is something like prayer or a moment of silence, as, to give some sort of, you know, flexibility when the meeting begins, to either do one or the other. Because I would hate to take away that option for a member of the clergy, or someone from an outside group to come in and do that prayer. I think it did lend a service and a sense of community to what we did. So I would like to see prayer left in, but I would also like to add something to the effect of/or a moment of silence, if Mr. Heckman would be amenable to that.
It's Mr. Brown's.
I'm fine with whatever council wants to do on this issue with Mr. Brown. It's his, this is his amendment.
Yeah, I, that's acceptable.
Well, there we go.
So what's the prayer and/or moment of silence?
Prayer and/or moment of silence.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
At the point of order, Mr. Gofredo was the second. Would he have to accept the amendment?
Would you, you would accept the amendment change? Okay. Thank you for putting me in check. Ms. Vargo Hefner.
I'm more amenable to the idea of the change or moment of reflection. I don't need the word prayer there. Plus, I don't want to be limited to where I pray in these meetings, because I'm praying often, and different ways, so, you know, I'd like the deal. But I do appreciate what Mr. Kuzak said, because I do think it's an opportunity to have faith leaders or community people come in, and it's not a bad idea to do that. But I wouldn't want to limit it to that term. So if we could do a moment of reflection, I would be more amenable to that. And I do agree with separation of church and state. It's my right to pray and do what I want to do, and how I want to do it. And that's everybody else's right, too. But I don't want to be limited on my time.
Anybody else?
I just want to add, Mr. Kuzak, I remember, I was here when we'd have, some people would come in, and we had people from different faiths come in, and it was, it's educational, it's informative. I think part of this was, again, I was brought up, and I know Tara has, I'm sorry, Ms. Zirinsky has brought our attention, is, things are a bit different today. I'll just use that word. And it's, I guess, you know, for me, I don't really give a lot of thought to it, because, and I hope it's not because of prejudice, but because I, I just, I always think people should have the right to pray or not pray at their own discretion. I know, I'm certainly the last that wants to have government get involved in. involved. It's bad enough we're in a relationship with business. Last thing we need is a government relationship with religion. So I just wanted to say, again, I'm fine with Mr. Brown's ordinance.
With his amendment.
And the change.
His amendment.
Okay. Find this very enlightening. Because of all the sit around here, remember, the day we were sworn in, there was prayer. We all remember that. The day we took office, there was prayer. So.
You got counsel members?
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm not going to war over something like that, you know, because, you know, we have to do what we have to do. We've had moments of silence for people. It's just respect. With that said, I have no problem with it. Let's call for.
I'm sorry.
Could we read the amendment?
I was going to ask that before we vote on it.
Thank you.
We're going to read it and then we're going to vote on it. Make sure we're correct with what's being asked.
Basically, it was to either put into the order of business prayer or moment of silence.
And/or.
And/or.
Well, you can have and/or or just?
And/or.
Okay.
It's just the idea of inclusivity because we are not necessarily representative of the future members of council. And although we may be of one denomination or another, we have to respect that future people might have different or diverse beliefs that should be included in the intention of this document.
Okay. And/or. We clear on what, any questions on it? Call for the vote on the amendment, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Now we're going to vote on the ordinance. As amended, okay? Whenever you're ready.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Great. Okay. I believe we're moving to number three. Consideration of an override, overriding the executive veto of Bill 8582023, Resolution Regarding the Upgrades of Audio-Visual Capabilities of the County of Northampton Meeting Room. It was introduced by Mr. Giovanni and Ms. Fargu Hefner. Any discussion from the public? Discussion by members of council? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Consideration of the 2024 Northampton County Budget Capital Improvement Plan. A. Consideration of a budgetary position-related issue. One. Department of Fiscal Affairs. A. Revenue eliminated clerical technician. Two. Create a clerical technician. Three. Create training specialists. Ms. Fargu Hefner, would you please read the resolution?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician, two, pay grade RUGR13, salary $30,521, shall be eliminated in Department of Fiscal Affairs revenue effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical tech, three, pay grade RUGR15, salary $33,465, shall be created in the Department of Fiscal Affairs revenue effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of revenue training specialist, pay grade CSGR19, salary $44,819, shall be created in the Department of Fiscal Affairs revenue effective January 1, 2024.
Discussion? Questions?
I watched the meeting. These were all discussed at your, the last meeting.
Yes.
I thought, I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, thanks. Well, you know, I'm going to save the moneymaker.
It was riveting, it was riveting TV.
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Adopted by a vote of eight.
B. Disbursement. Eliminate clerical technician. Three. Create fiscal technician. Ms. Fargu Hefner, introduce a resolution?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician, three, pay grade RUGR15, salary $33,465, shall be eliminated in the Department of Fiscal Affairs dispersment effective January 1, 2024. Further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of fiscal technician, pay grade RUGR20, salary $42,130, shall be created in the Department of Fiscal Affairs dispersment effective same date.
Discussion? No discussion by anybody? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Two. Department Administration. A. Conservation District Upgrade Full-Time Engineer. Ms. Fargu Hefner, would you introduce the resolution, please?
It is hereby result, oh, yeah, it's hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time engineer conservation district, pay grade CSGR30, salary $74,371, in the Department of Administration Conservation District shall be upgraded to pay grade CSGR33, salary $85,384, effective January 1, 2024.
Questions? I have one. Wasn't this something we discussed last month that we were going to do this?
I was just asking.
Yeah.
Yes. There was a lot of conversation about the Conservation District. The administration, I believe, saw the need for it to be raised. They raised it. My only question is, does Conservation District have any input with the figure or is that solely decided by the administration?
Mr. McClure, could you please answer that question for us? You are recognized.
Thank, am I? Thank you. Since you called me from over there, I thought, you know, you wouldn't revoke it when I got here. Mr. Dertinger did confer with Mr. Campbell about the number, but I think, I believe Mr. Dertinger ultimately made the decision. Thank you.
If there's any other questions, I'll, you just come up and answer them, okay? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Farmland Preservation Upgrade. Farmland Preservation Administrator. Upgrade Farmland Preservation Resource Specialist. Ms. Fargu Hefner, would you please read that one?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time farmland preservation program administrator, pay grade CS274D, salary $73,922, in the Department of Administration Farmland Preservation shall be upgraded to pay grade CS285E, salary $80,886, effective January 1, 24. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time farmland preservation resource specialist, pay grade RU25CF, salary $66,089, in the Department of Administration Farmland Preservation shall be upgraded to pay grade CS263C, salary $67,557, effective same date.
Excuse me. Discussion? None? Yes, sir, Mr. Brown?
The full-time farmland preservation specialist, didn't we just create that position recently? Is that an existing position that's being upgraded? I'm sorry. Was that created? Is that a new position that was just created and you're upgrading it?
So then, will I be right?
Of course. He did say that.
I do say you may sit up here.
It is the position that was contemplated and here it is in the budget. It's being created.
The way this is written is you're upgrading the salary before it's even been created.
Correct. Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm just a little confused as to why that, if we create, we're contemplating.
Because there's additional funding, I believe, if I remember correctly, there's additional funding that allows us to do the upgrade.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
So you're saying basically if the job was just created, what, why would there be an upgrade? Did it exist prior to this?
Yes. Because there's additional funding that we can upgrade the position.
So I guess he's, John's just looking for that kind of clarity.
Yes. That's what it, that's the answer.
Clarity.
Okay. There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Emergency Management, create 911 Training Manager. Ms. Zerinski, I mean, Ms. Fargu Hefner?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of the 911 Training Manager, pay grade CSGR26, salary $61,864, shall be created in the Department of Administration Emergency Management Services, effective January 1, 2024.
Questions? I do. We're just creating this and the 911's been up for how many years? We're creating this new position. Am I correct with that?
Yes.
And we're just doing it now because we didn't have one before?
Correct. Training was handled.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Training was handled by existing supervisors.
Ah, okay.
And so it takes so many hours to get a telecommunicator onto the floor. It was determined by leadership there that having a position that was solely devoted to training would get telecommunications on the floor quicker.
I have to agree with you on that.
And also relieve the other supervisors.
So they can do the, what they're.
So they could do their other jobs. Yep.
Okay.
It's absolutely a necessity.
Being there a couple of times and watching, I can see why we absolutely needed that. Mr. Gofredo?
I was just going to comment. I know someone that is in the 911 center and there is a higher than, you know, desired turnover rate and be able to have somebody training, new hires on constant rate is much needed there.
Yep, I agree. Any other, any other discussion? If not, can we have a vote on that, please?
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Court Services and Corrections. Public Defender. Create Assistant Public Defender. Ms. Fargu Hefner, would you read that?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one part-time position of Assistant Public Defender, pay grade RSGR06, salary $58,584, shall be created in the Public Defender's Office, effective January 1, 2024.
Was this part of the budget?
Yes, it was. Ms. Belluzio discussed it when she was here during budget hearings.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
$58,000 for a part-time position, is that, is that typical for a public defender? For part-time? And what is part-time?
Public defender?
Their caseloads are about half of what the full-time. Twenty hours roughly. Thank you. We have three full-time.
Any other questions on that? Can we call for a vote?
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Court Services. Create a deputy, okay? Thank you. Archivist. Ms. Fargu Hefner?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Deputy Archivist, pay grade CSGR20, salary $46,935, shall be created in the Department of Court Services Archives, effective January 1, 2024.
Discussion? Besides my tongue getting twisted on that one? If not, let's call for a vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Corrections. Eliminate Clerical Technician 2. Create Clerical Technician 3. Ms. Fargu Hefner?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Clerical Technician 2, pay grade RUGR13, salary $30,521, shall be eliminated in the Department of Corrections, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by council that one full-time position of Clerical Technician 3, pay grade RUGR15, salary $33,465, shall be created in the Department of Corrections, effective same date.
Discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Department of Public Works. Custodial Service Upgrade. Custodial Crew Leader. Ms. Fargu Hefner?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time custodian crew leader, pay grade CS163C, salary $42,631, in the Department of Public Works Custodial Services shall be upgraded to pay grade CS164D, salary $44,549, effective January 1, 2024.
Call for the vote. I'm sorry, discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Department of Human Services Program Centralized Data Eliminate Financial Information Systems Director. Create Administrative Officer 4. Ms. Fargu Hefner?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Financial Information Services Director, pay grade NSNG, salary $108,309, shall be eliminated in the Department of Human Services Program Centralized Data, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time Administrative Officer 4, pay grade HS45B12L, salary $114,109, shall be created in the Department of Human Services Program Centralized Data, effective January 1, 2024.
Discussion?
I believe these were discussed when we did their budget. But Ms. Swandelowski wants to come down to the front. Yeah, I know she's shaking her head in the back.
They were discussing the budget?
Have you have questions?
No.
Not from back there?
Not from back there.
It's a long walk.
Get your steps.
Did you, did you have questions?
Yes, we discussed all the personnel requests at my budget hearing.
Just in case.
Yep.
No other question?
Is this a position that's already filled or you guys?
No, this is filled. This is, we talked about Cindy Smith, the director of, all of fiscal people at Human Services was, got off the pay scale in the last administration. Now that we're out of civil service, we can get her back on the career service pay scale.
So she mentioned that name that remember us talking about?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, any other discussion? Call for the vote, you might want to stick around in case somebody does. Nope? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Information and Referral Emergency Services, eliminate County Caseworker Manager 2, create Iris Administrator. Ms. Varu Hefner.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of County Casework Manager 2, pay grade HS 42B 1A, salary $63,462 shall be eliminated in the Department of Human Services Information and Referral Emergency Services, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time Iris Administrator, pay grade HS 47A 1A, salary $79,085 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Iris, effective January 1, 2024.
Discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yep.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
C, Children, Youth and Families. Org 52800 and the 52900. Eliminate County Caseworker 2, create County Caseworker 3, create Legal Assistant 1. Ms. Varu Hefner.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of County Caseworker 2, pay grade PSGR 35, salary $43,572 shall be eliminated in the Department of Human Services Children, Youth and Families, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved that one full-time County Caseworker 3, pay grade PSGR 37A, salary $47,995 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Children, Youth and Families, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of County Caseworker 2, pay grade PSGR 35, salary $43,572 shall be eliminated in the Department of Human Services Children, Youth and Families, effective same date. It is further resolved by Council that one full-time County Caseworker 3, pay grade PSGR 37A, salary $47,995 shall be created in Department of Human Services Children, Youth and Families, effective same date. It is further resolved by the Council that the position of one full-time Legal Assistant 1, pay grade PSGR 31, salary $35,802 shall be created in Department of Human Services Children, Youth and Families, same date.
Discussion, questions? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
B, Area Agency on Aging, create two Aging Care Managers. Three, create Aging Care Manager Supervisor 2. Ms. Varu Hefner.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that two full-time Aging Care Manager 3s, pay grade PSGR 37B, salary $95,990 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time Aging Care Management Supervisor 2, pay grade HSGR 40, salary $58,115 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging, effective same date.
Discussion? Is this an additional supervisor? Okay. Never get an supervision, correct? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
E, Aging Agency on Aging, Part-Time Senior Center Operators. Ms. Varu Hefner, would you read that, please?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .5 FTE, pay grade PS 29 1A, salary of $16,258 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salary $18,821, effective January 1, 2024. Further resolved by Council that the position of one part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .5 FTE, pay grade PS 29 1A, salary $16,258 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salary $18,821, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by the Council that the position of one part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .6 FTE, pay grade PS 29 A 1A, salary $19,510 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salary $22,585, effective same date. It is further resolved by Council that the position of one part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .65 FTE, pay grade PS 29 A 2B, salary $20,046 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salary $22,585, effective same date. It is further resolved by Council that the position of one part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .6 FTE, pay grade PS 29 A 4D, salary $21,164 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salary $22,585, effective same date. It is further resolved by Council that the position of one part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .6 FTE, pay grade PS 29 A 6F, salary $22,343 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 3C, salary $23,845, effective same date. It is further resolved by Council that the vacant positions of three, part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .6 FTE, pay grade PS 29A, salaries $58,529 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salary $67,756, effective same date. It is further resolved by Council that the vacant positions of two part-time Senior Center Operator 1s, .63 FTE, pay grade PS 29A 3C, salaries $43,255 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salaries $47,429, effective same date. It is further resolved by Council that the vacant position of one part-time Senior Center Operator 1, .8 FTE, pay grade PS 29A, salary $26,130 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade PS 32 1A, salary $30,114, effective January 1, 2024.
Discussion?
I'm praying now. No.
Discussion?
I just want to make sure that that .63 was accurate, because everything was not two digits. So was that, did I?
Mr. Kuzic, you got a question?
Yeah, then this somewhat tags on to what Mr. Gofredo said before. The part-time position, it says the three part-time senior center operators, salary $67,756, is that high for a part-time position?
I think that's three, all three combined, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, it was three.
Now.
And the other one was two. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
F, Area Aging Agency on Aging, upgrade to Senior Center Operator 2. Ms. Varu Hefner.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time Senior Center Operator 2, pay grade HS 31 1A, salary $39,105 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade HS 33 1A, salary $42,704, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by Council that the position of one full-time Senior Center Operator 2, pay grade HS 31 4D, salary $44,626 in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging shall be upgraded to pay grade HS 33 4D, salary $48,732, effective same date.
Discussion? Ms. Swandelowski, what's the difference between one and two with the senior center operators?
The, the two are the, primarily the full-time positions. I could certainly get you more technical information next time.
That's clarification, not from me. Anybody else? Call for vote. Have for the public.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
G, Developmental Program, create Program Specialist 2. Ms. Varu Hefner.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time Program Specialist 2, pay grade HSGR 41, salary $60,729 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Developmental Programs, effective January 1, 2024.
Discussion? Questions? None? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
H, Drug and Alcohol Case Management, create D and A Program Specialist 1. Ms. Varu Hefner.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time Drug and Alcohol Program Specialist 1, pay grade HSGR 39B, salary $55,612 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Drug and Alcohol Case Management, effective January 1, 2024.
Discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
I, Greystale Nursing Home, upgrade Business Office Manager, upgrade Lead Accountant. Ms. Varu Hefner.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time Business Office Manager, pay grade CS 25 5E, salary $70,453 in the Department of Human Services Greystale Administration shall be upgraded to pay grade CS 28 3C, salary $74,070, effective January 1, 2024. It is further resolved by County Council that the position of one full-time Lead Accountant, pay grade CS 28 3C, salary $74,070 in the Department of Human Services Greystale Administration shall be upgraded to pay grade CS 28 4D, salary $77,403, effective same date.
Discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Consideration of the 2024 Pay Scale Salary Resolution. Can, Tara, would you take care of that for us, please? It looked like Lori's got long-winded, needs a break.
This resolution?
Yes. The pay scale resolution.
Yep. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the 2024 salaries of the career service exempt employees not within collective bargaining units whose job classifications are within the parameters of the Northampton County Career Service and exempt pay scales respectively, as well as the part-time professional employees, shall be as indicated on the attached pay scales.
Any discussion? Can we call for the vote?
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Adoption C of the 2024 Budget Consideration Amendment for Proposed 2024 Budget Resolution. Mr. Kuzic, would you read that?
Sure. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the proposed 2024 Northampton County Budget shall be amended as indicated on the attached document.
Discussion? Yes, Ms. Zirinsky.
I have a... Are we voting on this altogether, or are we going to be voting on them individually?
The resolution gets voted on as a whole. However, if there's questions about certain ones, or you want to change certain things, there'd have to be a motion and a second. And then the final vote would be on the resolution as amended.
Okay. Because I have some real issues with how, I feel
I feel that in some ways the application process is being circumvented for many of these grants, that some of these grants should be applied for or that people did apply, they didn't get as much money as they wanted to. And no offense to Mr. Haynes, you're here for a second time in the same... For the same thing. So I'm wondering, like, in this case, are we going to fund this website every single year? This marketing program is... Because it seems to be, like, that's the source of revenue that is going to fund that. So that's problematic to me because it seems like if you know this is an expense that you're going to have every year, maybe you should find a way to generate those funds. I'm sure there's people who would want to contribute to that, that actually benefit directly from that in the historic district. Also, there's other amendments here. I had written down some things. There's several... The EPA brownfields and future grants. One of the things with the EPA is that they have the final say on how those grants are allocated. So whether or not you want to amend that to add Upper Mount Bethel Power Plant remediation or not, the EPA is going to have the final say on that. So I'm not quite sure if voting on that to transfer those funds really matters. This circumvention right here with the funding to provide $20,000 to lower Sockin Fire Rescue, $10,000 for Helltown Library, $5,000 for Sockin Valley Community Center. I know those aren't really large amounts of money, but again, that circumvents the process. When you circumvent the application process for these grants, you don't necessarily get a say in how that grant is spent because now you're just giving them money. If you would follow those procedures, you could also ask about... What do I want to say? Matches? Or ask specifically how the grant is going to be spent or drawn down and how monies will be reimbursed. There's several fire companies on here specifically. Liberty Fire Department, Roseto Columbia Fire Department. I'm wondering why there's so many fire departments that we're giving money to that did not apply for grants?
Roseto and North Bangor both applied. For some reason, they were denied.
And why were they denied?
I would like to know that, too.
Can we get an answer to that?
Is there someone here can answer that?
I guess my point is, there's a lot of issues here, I think, in individual grants. And if we're going to vote on the proposed budget amendments as a whole, I'm going to vote no.
Other discussion? Ms. Varu Hefner?
We all attended... A lot of us attended the budget hearing and we discussed it at that time. You know, I understand that there's grants. I also understand that, you know, I've been here for a few years and there's people who've been here a lot longer than I have, and that how these grants have been delineated over time has changed. So Council does have the authority to make, to move, to determine how these grants are. They also have the right to be sitting on these committees and more than one member. So I think this is our job. This is what we do. We're allowed to move money as long as we don't affect the fund balance. And I think that there are people at times that put in for money and they're not heard or they're not accepted by the administration for various reasons. I'm not going to sit up here and debate why or what or how. I don't care about that. I just think that there's certain people that can get denied time and time again and that we have the right to change the budget. And I think everybody took the time and the effort to put these amendments forth and we debated them two weeks ago and I'm going to stand by what we did.
More discussion? One thing I can echo is that I was on one of the committees and we only had a certain amount of money. And we dealt out what we had. If it's not enough for what someone's budget is, we just did not have the money to give to them. There's nothing we can do about it if the requests are 2.5 and we get 1.6. We can only give them what we got. And that's basically what happened with our friend's request right there because I sat on that committee. There was more requests than we had money for. We can only give them what they got. That's why they got what they got.
Right, but a lot of this money is coming from future grants.
I'm only talking about the one that I had personally had to deal with. Yes, Ms. Varu Hefner?
I want to double back, too. You know, there is ARPA money left. And during our budget hearings, I heard a lot of language like, "We're taking, we're doing..." And the way it was phrased was not a request. It was not like, "Council, this is what our intention is. We'd like you to consider this." It's like, "It's going to be done." There's a million dollars left in that fund. And I think some of the suggested ways to use it, Council has the ability and the right to be able to do so. And so that's where a lot of this money came from. We allocated so much money over how many years exactly the way that was specified 100% by this administration? And $1 million was left out that I think if we want to exercise our right to spend it as we see fit, we can because that is our job. We are budgetary and that's what we're allowed to do. So with all due respect to what we're taking or we're doing, Council sees differently.
Any more discussion? Yes, Mr. Heckman, we're still in discussion?
No, I mean, we'll be discussing any and all of these amendments. So, okay, fair enough. I... There were a few that I just wanted to touch base on, if I may. First of all, yeah, I know we have a... I don't recall getting these.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're not attached. I have mine from the budget amendment hearing.
Okay, well, anyway, let me start.
Go ahead. I'll take.
First, I agree with Ms. Hefner. I mean, there is a process and that was developed over time. We... There was a time when Council pretty much did a lot of grants. There was a time when Human Services did their own grants. And then a Department of Community Economic Development was created and it sort of sucked all that money into that department to hand out. I won't get into my personal feelings when that was developed, but it is what it is. And yes, there is a procedure and it's good. But I've heard some council members and I've had communications with people on the outside who claim that they've been at times stonewalled or they have... Feel that they were unfairly rejected. Now, I'm not saying they're right or they're wrong, but, you know, Council does have the right to make changes regardless of somebody's process. I don't think it necessarily undermines it if somebody moves or something around and they have a specific reason. I wouldn't go in willy-nilly and say, "Yeah, I'm going to do this because these are nice people and, you know..." But if you think that something is... Should be done, it's not like you're, you know, it's some constitutional issue. It's part of the reason we're here. Over the years, I realized the role of the legislative branch has been somewhat narrowed and narrowed or told that it's been narrowed. But this is part of what we do. We can giveth and we can taketh away when it comes to money. And people can say, "Well, that's not the way it should be," but that's the way it is. I have a specific concern, though. So that's just in general. So I don't really have the same problem you do. I think if somebody were to just go in and say, "Well, I'm doing this because I don't like how they run things," or that would be wrong. And I've sat on the committees, too, that we gave out, especially during the COVID money. And I think overall the processes are fair, but no matter what process you use, there's always going to be situations that may fall through the cracks. Nothing's perfect. And that applies to even county procedures. So, you know, Council members have to live with whatever they decide to do or not do when it comes to budgetary issues. I do have a question, though, about the student loan. And I know we've discussed that, John. And here's my question. I know I have no problem... First of all, I have no problem with the idea of a student loan forgiveness plan because I believe we should do everything possible to encourage people to work for the county. I think the county as a whole, we're slow to understand that we are now in the global economy. There was a time when people would stand in line to get a job with the county or the city or somebody like that. And we could easily sell those jobs based on our benefits and a real pension. Those days, though, are sort of gone and we're competing with companies and other places. So while I favor the student loan as a concept, I prefer to see money going into better wages. I mean, I know... And look, I understand why an administration would balk at that because that's a compounding expense going forward. If we raise rates now, each year that's going to go up and it's going to build out at the end. So... But we're a personnel-driven government. We just are. And I... For the life of me, I don't know why I've gotten pushed back from unions, government unions, on the idea of wanting to pay people more. I don't know. I just don't understand it. I understand that people who have been around a long time don't want to see pay raised for people coming in the door unless they get something. Well, that's not how we do things anymore. I mean, you know, there is a reality that everybody has to face at some point and that is that we're going to have to increase starting pays. And if you've been here seven years and you want exactly the same rate of increase, you may not get it. And really, I think, you know, to not get that at some point is just going to be the downfall of some of these efforts to get people coming in the door. I mean, we just don't pay enough. And so I guess I'd like... I prefer the money were going that way. But having said that, I can't make that happen. That has to be negotiated. I'm not happy with the career service that they got bumped on benefits. In fact, I don't exactly understand the legality of it because I believe all the employees are supposed to be in the same... I just think it's wrong that we're making them pay more for their health care than people who are in the unions. I don't understand that either. I understand money, but I don't understand why we're doing that. They shouldn't be forced to pay an increase when others aren't. And finally, I would say, John, if you pass this, you're relying on the administration to put together a program for student loans. How... I mean, how fast or how quick do you think that's going to happen? I mean, they don't want to do it. So, I mean, I'm torn. What's the amount again? 500?
500,000.
500, right. I mean, 500,000, I don't know the mechanism. They're going to have to come up with a mechanism. So all of these things have to be done. So I'll support it. I just don't know where it's going to go ultimately. I agree with your idea. Anything that can get people in, but it's going to be the devil or God, if you will, is going to be in the details. So that's my concern and I'm voicing it now. So there you go.
May I respond?
Yes, you can, Mr. Kuzick.
Yeah, I think what this is, it's a recruitment and a retention tool. That's what it's about. I mean, we have, as you mentioned, a whole host of benefits. Some of them employees use, some of them don't. Wellness. Some people go for a walk themselves. Some people don't use the wellness plan. But I think that when we think about some of the openings we have, and we had the DA here, he's got 10 openings. Well, you know, a lot of his potential recruits might have, you know, loans from law school. I know we're going to need to hire two accountants in the controller's office. It might be attractive if you have someone with student loans there. The entry-level positions we've talked about here, caseworkers, 911 operators, nurses. I mean, we've given out all kinds of bonuses there. So I think that there's a place for this and I think it would be an excellent recruiting tool when we're hiring new employees. It would give us an edge over some of the other employers that maybe don't offer a program like this.
Well, I have the floor. May I... Am I allowed to go to the next one?
Ms. Serinski, I'll get back to you.
Yeah.
I can hold up.
I just wanted to say in some respect that I agree with Mr. Heckman that I had an issue with the student loan program, too. Or the... Actually, not the student loan program, just funding a program that doesn't exist because it doesn't have any parameters around it. I have some knowledge about student loans. Like, I've had my own. I'm probably not going to pay them off until I'm 70, you know? I think I'm probably going to still be paying my son's loans when I'm 70. Do you know what I mean? So I understand that $500,000 is not going to be a student loan program that's going to be effective in any way, shape, or form. Like, it might be a nice little draw, like a little virtue signaling thing to like say, "Yeah, we're going to do this." But like $500,000, you're talking about people with hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt. And by what percentage are you going to reimburse them? At what point do they have to agree to stay in their county job for a certain number of years before they are eligible for reimbursement? Or are you just going to give that sign-on bonus, like, "We'll forgive your student loans"? So when I look at the variety of student loan debt that there is, the idea that there is some federal student loan forgiveness, the idea that there are private student loans that have debt at like, you know, 9%, 10%, 11% interest rates? And I understand that people are drowning in it and it might be a good tool, but if you're going to really look at a program to understand how to fund it, to start it, I think you have to really look at what... How many people in the county currently have student loans? Like, take a survey. How many people have student loans? What is the amount of debt? At what degree? What percentage are we going to fund them by? And what are the parameters? Like, create the program before you fund it so that you know what you're getting into. Because if you start something and you go down the rabbit hole, it might be a lot deeper than you think. Just saying.
Mr. Heckman?
Oh, no. I don't want to jump to a new topic if you still want to discuss the student loans.
The student loan thing is a huge undertaking. Only thing we got to do is go up to the building in Bethlehem Township and Ms. Wobnawski would tell you all of her employees, if not a good portion of them, all have college degrees. Am I correct? They got debt. All of them. And all depends what school they went to. So 500,000 is not even going to put a dent in what we're looking at that building. I mean, it's a nice thought, but it's a lot of more money that's going to be needed. And I know there's a federal program and that, you know, I don't know how long you have to work. It's 10 years, whatever that might be with that. It may be... But we'd have... I think you need to rethink that 500,000 if that's the point that we're going at. Go ahead.
Yeah. If I could just respond, I think this is just a starting place. Do we know how much every employee together? Is that my intention? No. I think what my intention here is to start a program that will incentivize new hires and retention of existing employees. And what I think what you're asking is a chicken and an egg question. It's... Well, we don't have the money. It's what... Which comes first, the money or the program? I mean, I think if I sit here and presented a program, you would say, "Well, you don't have the money." And if I presented... And now I'm presenting the money and you're saying, "I don't have a program." So I think that there's a catch-22 here that you could argue this either way. But I think without funding and starting something, we can't go anywhere. So this would be an initial step to see if this is something we can do to incentivize new hires and retain employees.
Before you answer that, let me get back because this is something we've been discussing for two or three years since we've been here, all of us at one point. We just didn't know the amount or the enormous amount that will take to do this. If that's what we're looking at, then, okay, I understand where we're coming from because everybody's going to have some debt one way or another. I just don't know what the answer is. I'm not against it. I'm just saying we need to make sure we understand what that... This thing could... What we're looking at is a starting thing. Before we're done, it could be a full-blown egg. Ms. Serinski?
Well, that's my point. You could argue it either way, but something fiscally responsible isn't to start a program that you can't finish and you can't fully fund. I think that this is starting a program that is going to erupt into a... What do I want to say? A money pit that we are not going to be able to fund. I think I could look out into this audience and I could see $500,000 of debt right here. So if you look at every single employee, because I bet you I have almost a fourth of that, maybe not a fourth, but like maybe a sixth of that alone. So I can't in good conscience commit the county to starting a program that I know could actually take millions of dollars to fund. And I don't think that that's what we want to do as a county. We want to incentivize employees, but if you don't put the parameters in place before you start the program, you don't really know what you're getting into. And I would like to know what I'm getting into before I fund something. And that, I won't say anything else.
Ms. Varu Hefner?
I think that it's an admirable place to start. Somebody has to start somewhere. We go to C cap all the time. You read the news. Everything is stated that there is a workforce crisis in this state. And we don't know how to get these young people to come into these jobs. These people are understaffed, underpaid, and I don't know how they're going to pay their debts on this without a program. So if you're taking a starting... No one's talking about, "We're going to do this. We're going to take this money. It's going to fully fund everybody for life." You've got to start somewhere and we've got to be creative and do something. We start, we allocate the money, and then if we have to turn around and the administration doesn't want to enforce it, well, that's a problem for another day. But it's in the budget and you have a placeholder. And not everybody who is sitting here now is going to get all the money. There's going to have to be a mechanism developed. But to sit here and go, "Well, we can't, we can't, we can't, so let's not..." Everybody in the state is talking about, "How do we get creative and start somewhere and do something?" And if I'm going to err on the side of not or do something, I would much rather do something. And as far as the pay piece, like, everybody would want greater pay. Of course, I would want to do that, but we can't seem to get our pay study finished. So as soon as that gets done, then maybe we could address it because I would have loved to be going in that direction this year. But we've had to wait two years. I'm not sure what the delay is, but we'll get there. But, you know, that should be the conversation that we're having. So until we can have that, this is something we can do.
Mr. Gofredo?
Ms. Serinski might be surprised, but I do agree with a lot of the sentiments of your argument. I might have a couple...
I'm not surprised.
Oh, stop. Stop.
I'm surprised.
Stop.
I... Maybe for some other reasons, I don't fully agree with the concept of having a student repayment program. I think the answer to our question is rather obvious. The solution might not be. But pay is the number one factor. Pay is the number one reason why it's harder and harder to find people to come work here. I appreciate the fact that a lot of people have student loans, but there are people that don't have student loans. And, you know, I see that as, you know, a good thing. I think it should be encouraged not to have debt. And the fact that the only people that would be benefiting from this are the people with debt is one reason why I don't like it. The other reason is, I don't know where you stop then. This is... This is a small bite out of a huge, huge issue that if we started... I don't know if we could finish it. It might devour us because that is a huge... It's a huge... I'm not going to use the word, but huge... Huge number that we would have to try to accomplish. But I make a motion to strike this from the overall budget amendment resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor to strike it. Am I correct?
Yep.
And we have a second.
Further discussion on this? Discussion, go. Mr. Brown wants to talk.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you want to talk, but, yeah. Just in deference to Mr. Kuzick's idea, I think it's fair points. I mean, if we're saying we want to make a program where any employee comes in and we're going to pay off their entire college debt...
No, I'm not going to say that.
No, wait, hold it. Hold it. But that's sort of what some of this discussion is leaning towards.
But that's sort of what some of this discussion is leaning towards. I, I, no. I, I mean, for example, let's say somebody walks in, they have a $70,000 debt. Well, first of all, I mean, I'm not designing something like this, but it would be, like, we'd probably use the public state school base. I mean, if you want to go to Harvard, fine, but you're not going to get more than you'd get if, for going to Kutztown. And that would be a percentage. So, so the idea that somehow, I would think that the county would come in, pay off somebody's entire student loan. No. I, I, I think that would be a foolish program, and I don't think the county would ever support that. Also, the county puts the parameters on. So the county can say, this is how much is in. And you put in your, your things and you might get some, you might not get. And can that create problems? Sure, that can create problems. But I don't think, I mean, I was listening, and, and some of it seemed like, well, we're not going to be able to pay off everybody's student loan, and it's going to go into millions of dollars in debt. And I'm thinking, well, not necessarily, because you're certainly not putting yourself in a position where even if this were implemented, the county's going to put a program out that says, come on in, and we'll hire you and we're going to pay off your college debts. So that, that's, that's a non-starter. That's not going to happen. But that's what I said when I first spoke about it. A lot's going to depend on if the administration would go forward with it, putting a program together that's workable. And that's going to be where the devil in the details is. But I mean, I support the concept, but, you know, I just wanted to put that proviso out there. I've been hearing that we're going to run out of money, possibly, but, you know. And then there's the idea of whether or not it's a function of what we should do. And that's a fair, legitimate concern.
Mr. Brown.
The, the idea of putting the money forth and creating the program, the administration has brought forth several pilot programs that, quite honestly, some I don't, don't agree with. There's funding from grants and so on that being used. And I'll point to Greystale and the daycare center. There's so much spent, $2 million for 50, potentially 50 employees. My concern being that if that goes beyond that, there's no forward funding plan for that. It's a pilot program. We're going to try it for a year or two for recruitment and retention purposes, similar to what John is proposing with this money. So to argue that, to Ms. Zirinsky's point, that, oh, we shouldn't do this, there's already a record of the administration bringing in programs or like that, and this body approving those kind of programs. So I, I think that whole argument really doesn't have, really carry much water overall. To Ron's point and to John's point, it's really about giving a little sweetener to what you can get when you, if you choose to come to work for the county, a little bit of incentive. I don't, I agree, it's not meant to, you know, whether it be $500, a $250, you know, stipend towards your student loans or something like that. That's kind of what I'm envisioning with that. We have retention bonuses that have been offered out of the, some of the ARPA money, I believe it was, that was set aside. There's no future funding to continue that program once those monies are gone, but it's a pilot program. And if it turns to be, out to be 90% effective, then I believe the administration probably would find additional funding to continue programs like that, similar to the daycare center. So, you know, I think this probably has some, some basis for being given the initiative. And, and I agree with John's comment, it's a chicken and egg. Rarely does a program get created and then go find the funding. It's usually, hey, we've got money to spend, how can we spend it and build the parameters effectively around it? So, thank you.
Ms. Kusick.
No, he didn't have a question.
I mean, Gofredo.
John, I, I hear what you're saying, I get it. I guess my, my logic is, you know, if I'm, if I'm looking to get a job at the county and they say, hey, I can give you $500, I can give you $1,000 for your student loan, but the job over here is offering $10,000 more a year, I don't think it's going to be enough of an impact for me to reconsider. And at that point, it's like, what if it doesn't do anything for us? You know, what if, what if the employee retention bonuses that we gave at Greystale leaves them, after all the money spent in the same exact employment predict, and we just took 5, 10 million, whatever it was, and it's gone? This is $500,000. If we find ourselves in a similar situation after that money's gone, it's like, we're throwing around a lot of money. And I think the solution is pretty clear. And I understand that, you know, it's really hard to raise salaries countywide, thousands of employees, it adds up quickly. But I think we need to be looking inside that box of what we can do. There's a lot of things that are going to be coming on the way that could change our situation drastically, whether it's utilizing artificial intelligence to do clerical stuff. There's going to be a lot of things that might change that situation. But setting up a loan forgiveness program, I don't know if it's a virtue signal, but I think it's, it's trying to, $500,000 seems like a lot of money, but it's not going to be an impactful amount of money per person. And I think we're fooling ourselves if we think it's going to make a huge impact countywide for time to come. That's, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, I get it. I don't think anybody has bad intentions here. I think it's a solid idea, and all ideas are good ideas, but I don't think I would support it. So I stand by my amendment.
No more?
Just one, one point. Again, I, I think that this, this would be something that we can offer as part of our recruitment and retention program. Then, you know, you can see whether or not it works by the response that we get from prospective employees. I mean, that's, it's that simple. If it, if programs don't work, we discontinue them. So again, I think this is a good pilot program. If it, if it's effective, then it's something that we can consider moving forward. If it's not, well, then it's something that can be eliminated in the future. But I think we have to start somewhere. And it, it's tough to attract some of the younger employees, and I think this is a good way to do it.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yeah, I just want to comment on what Mr. Brown said. I think it's really a false equivalency that you would draw a connection between the daycare and student loan forgiveness. What daycare does is it frees up your time. So if you're a person who needs childcare, and you need to work, and you could become more available because now you have eight hours in a day because your child is being taken care of in a place that's right next to you, that's liberating. To be meaningful, these, this student loan forgive, to be meaningful as a tool, to be able to recruit and retain employees, you would have to give a significant amount of money. It couldn't be like, we're going to give $500 to you. It has to be like, we're going to give $5,000, we're going to give $10,000. And there has to be parameters to it. And we do not have those parameters yet, and that's why I stand by this. I wholly stand by the childcare center, because that frees up time. Time is money. And if you could get an employee to have more time, that's gold. That's incentive. So, I'm done. Can we vote on this?
Well, I have plenty I can say. I'm just going to let it go because we're going down forever. We're going to vote on the amendment, which was?
To take out.
Student loan program from the amendments.
To strike the student loan program from the amendments. And it was seconded, correct?
Yes.
Let's call for a vote on that.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kusick.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
No.
Fails by a vote of two to six.
Now we're voting on the amendment? As is?
No, you're voting. No, I just had a question about, because now, thank you for getting this for me. So I see the constables are on here, and I'm just having a question about that. Because I, I was trying to look back at my notes from the first meeting, and we voted up and down on some of these things.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, it was on the thing.
We're okay. I understand. Go ahead, Ms. Vore, you have to.
So I was just double-checking with the constables, because somehow that was tied in. And when we did the vote on that, during that meeting, I thought that it failed, so it's still here, and I'm not sure why. Because I think you were going to take a certain amount of money and try to shift it to something else, and that failed also. So there's still the sum of $15,000. Does that need to be amended in any way or stricken?
This that I gave you was the original budget amendments that were handed out. It's not marked what was changed when we voted on them.
Right. So. But I'm looking at the revisions, and the constables are still in, but I have in my notes from that day that we voted against that. And I'm going to just try to find that.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. On page two.
Yeah, we asked if, we were going to remove $115,000 from fiscal affairs constables to provide money to buy county ventures, $5,000 to public works, and $10,000 to DCED grants. So do we still need the $15,000, or did we strike the whole thing?
Yeah, I think I know where it is.
I have it.
There's $10,000 that was added to grants and $5,000 to public works administration.
So we just struck.
That's $15,000.
So we just struck the $100,000 and we kept the 15. I just want, I'm just asking for clarification before we go to the vote.
There weren't two parts to that. One of it was the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, which Mr. Barron so eloquently spoke about, but we already cut that money out.
Right.
And what remained was the $15,000. $10,000 is the grants, and $5,000 is the public works administration operating. So that's the $15,000.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I was on the right page. Thank you.
Okay.
And then everything else was a yes.
Okay, where are we at now?
We're clear. We're, I understand.
Right, so the $15,000 was given for the Grace Packer and the Williams.
Yes.
LVP C was stroke.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Heckman.
All right, as long as we're running through all of these, we received a letter from fiscal affairs that states that we are out of sync, if you will. But no, that we're, that, I, I think it's, it's in your packet. I don't know if anybody has, has referenced it. But that essentially that we are out of, you have to balance your budget, and we're out of balance, let's put it that way. If we, I would assume the letter means if we pass what has been proposed by county council. And I don't know if we need any clarification on that or not, but we certainly don't want to be out of balance. We can't be. So I don't know if any other council members read that letter?
Yeah, can I address that? There, and it's been-
I'm waiting for somebody to address it.
Yeah, it's been discussed previously. There's a million dollars of ARPA funding that has not been designated yet. That's where the $500,000 for the chiller would come from.
So I guess the question I would have then, Mr. President, is why did we get the letter? I mean, if the money's there, I mean, is it because it's not been applied yet in the budget? And you're just saying there's money available if they use it, which then they could say, well, it hasn't been applied officially, so technically you're out of, out of balance? There's one of the fiscal affairs, Mr. President, maybe they, I don't know if they should answer or not.
I'm going to ask Mr. Barron to come up and maybe give some clarification on what's going on. Could you do that for him, please, sir?
The budget has component parts to it. So yes, there's a million dollars that we had spoken about quite clearly. The chiller is paid for in the budget, mind you. Mr. Kusick's amendment basically says, well, we want to pay for the chiller from another funding source. While moving that money around, and the scheme he has put together to move that money around, puts the budget out of balance. I respectfully suggest that we're fixing the chiller. We put it in our budget. It's part of our priorities. If you pass the amendments as they are now and just say, we want to take it from this other funding source, you knock the budget out of balance. And that's just the way it is.
It's already paid, it's already-
It's already contemplated in our budget.
As a capital project?
If you strike, yeah, as a capital project. And the way capital projects are, like, run through the budget, you create an unbalanced budget. So you could say whatever you want, you can move the money like that, but I'm just telling you, your budget's out of balance, and county council, you know, you might be the money, but you can't touch the estimates of revenue. And the estimates of revenue or the revenue or the fund balance goes to fund the capital project. So.
Any questions on what he just explained to us? Don't go over Steve.
Yeah, a lot, a lot.
There's, there's questions for you.
Sure.
Mr. Brown, did you ask?
Yeah. Then, Steve, what would you do to balance, rebalance the budget once the amendment was passed?
Our budget stands as proposed. It would be an illegal budget, and our budget would pass. It wouldn't be balanced. So it would be not, it would not conform to the Home Rule Charter, and therefore, our budget becomes law.
So then, the way the budget is constructed, then they have the monies that Mr. Kusick is recommending, I think it was your proposal, John, to move, that leaves the budget overbalanced with revenue that's not being utilized, that was contemplated to be utilized in capital, correct?
Council can't touch the estimates of revenue, and therefore-
Not revenue, I'm talking about an expenditure on where the monies are coming from to pay for the chiller.
What was that?
Currently, the payment, monies that are anticipated by the administration to pay for the chiller is being provided from where?
It's being provided from the general fund.
Right. Allocated to the capital project.
Correct.
Budget line item.
Correct.
Mr. Kusick is recommending a funding source for that. That's not the general fund, so that would leave the general fund overfunded by $500,000, whatever the number is, correct?
It wouldn't leave it overfunded. You can't touch the projections of revenue. And since there is-
I'm not talking about revenue.
No, you are, no, you absolutely are, Mr. Brown. You're, you're absolutely talking about revenue, because the way that the capital budget is funded is through infusions and transfers from the fund balance into the capital projects. So you're absolutely talking about the estimates of revenue. And therefore, by moving this money around, because it sits in the capital budget, if we were talking about a regular general fund item or something in one of the orgs, be completely a different story, and I would have nothing to say about that, and you would be in balance. But the way we fund capital projects, the way you did it when you were executive, and the way we've done it as long as I've been here, is, you know, we fund it from the general fund, we make an infusion of cash, and it's part of a projection of revenue. All I'm saying is, chiller's paid for. The, the means to pay for it, Mr. Kusick made a recommendation, it knocks your budget out of balance. The chiller's still getting paid for either way.
Mr. Heckman?
So, just so I understand, Stern, there's a multitude of amendments in the overall document.
Correct.
You're saying that the specific problem is with the public works, the chiller.
Correct.
If that were taken out, you're not, you're not saying the other dot, the other, the other amendments are being done in the way you would do them, whether you do them or not.
Correct.
It's the chiller specifically.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not endorsing them in any way, shape or form. I'm just saying that the chiller's paid for. You take this out, you pass your amendments, the budget's balanced.
Okay. Thank you. That answers the question. Any other discussion?
I don't know.
Mr. Brown?
So then, Mr. Barron, based on what you're saying, when we get the capital improvements budget to, that we have to vote on and improve, you're saying we can't touch that budget as presented by, by the administration?
If you amended it correctly, possibly.
Good, and how would we amend it correctly to execute?
Our budget stands as proposed. You sat in the executive's office, you should know how to do that. My budget stands as proposed. The administration budget stands as proposed.
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
Thank you. That's fine.
Let's, 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 both sides be respectful here?
Oh, I was being respectful.
I think you had a little edge in the way you were proposing it.
It's okay.
So let me rephrase the question.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Or you're, if, when the capital project plan is presented to this body and an equal amount of funding was reduced from the capital plan, that equals the chiller recommendation that Mr. Kusik says that would put your budget back and if we eliminated a project of that value in the, and not approve it for the capital plan, would that be your budget back in balance?
I'm not sure. I would have to see what the proposal is.
Okay, so I have a proposal and I, we don't approve a project for that amount. So we, we take an equal amount out of one of Mr. Millie's bridge projects and we choose not to fund that in this project. Would that put, put it back in balance if there's an equal trade of projects at that point?
I'd have to see what the proposal is, but I wouldn't want a bridge to fall down because of a chiller that's already paid for.
I'm not asking for your opinion on the change. I'm asking if it would put it back into balance.
That's, it's fine. I, I, our, our budget stands as proposed in that matter and your budget is not balanced with these amendments. That's my answer to the question.
So you're not going to get an answer to your question, is what's going to happen?
No, I answered the question.
So the answer to my colleagues here would be, that's the solution potentially to put the budget back into balance, other than the one that Mr. Barron proposes, which is to strike Mr. Kusik's amendment. Now, either way, I'm just, I just want counsel to have an informed perspective on what can and can't be done. Mr. Barron's correct. We can't touch revenues. That, that's fine. I understand that. But there are other options if counsel wanted to support the amendment as proposed by Mr. Kusik or not. And that would be a Plan B. We could follow Mr. Barron's advice and remove Mr. Kusik's amendment or there would be another option in when we get to the capital projects plan to strike an equal, a project or projects equal to that dollar value, which would then restore the capital plan as proposed by the administration back into balance with that. So I just wanted to offer that as the options that counsel could consider, whether you choose to do that or not. That's the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zerinsky's got her hand up and I'm going to go to you, Mr. Heckman, and then anybody on this side after that.
Thank you. I, I just can't wrap my head around why we're arguing about this. If the chiller is already paid for, why are we trying to pay for the chiller out of the ARPA money? If we have a million dollars in ARPA money, why are we rushing to allocate it to something that's already paid for? Why not just save that $1 million and then fund something else that we, that counsel in Northampton County designates as important in, in 2024? I'm sure there's amendments that are going to come up in 2024 that a million dollars would help fund. And so I, I, can, can I move to amend and strike this from this budget amendment? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I'm striking Capital Improvements Project's Gracemont Chiller. I'm striking, taking $5,000-
Five hundred.
$500,000 out of the ARPA capital improvements.
You're doing what Mr. Barron asked us to do? Is that what you're asking for?
No, the chiller's already paid for. I don't understand why we're arguing whether to pay it out of ARPA money or not. I think we could just move on.
Is it paid for?
No.
He walked out of the room, but I don't think he realizes that. It makes me want to go against him when he acts like that, but I would just like to know, is it paid for?
It's in the budget line item and capital projects already. There's money allocated and designated for it. If the money is already allocated and designated for it in the portion of the budget for capital projects, there's no reason to dip into ARPA money. Just save that for another project.
Where did, where did our fiscal administrator go?
I have no doubt. Mr., Mr. Brown?
To answer, to answer that question is, um, the monies, money-
Hold on a second, he's, he's-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Monies that I believe Mr. Barron's pointing to are from the general fund, which is from tax revenues. That's going to pay for this chiller project. The ARPA money, I believe that, or, or the, the change in that frees up the tax money to go back into the general fund to be used more generally. I believe the ARPA money has certain handcuffs and other restrictions to it and it is currently unallocated. So it's, it's moving monies around that then actually puts more opportunity back in the general fund to do exactly what you're pointing to, Ms. Zerinsky. And that would be, I believe, the logic, John, that we, we discussed when you were proposing making this change. Just FYI information.
Thank you, Mr.?
He meant, Mr. Barron meant no disrespect, Mr. Gofredo. He left to make use of the Comfort Facilities. He's comfortable now.
He's comfortable now. Maybe that's why he was so edgy.
Okay, 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 okay. Let's not, let's not get off the track.
A little disrespectful.
Let's, let's not get off the track. So we're asking for an amendment to change. Ron, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I know. Let me just say, Ms. Zerinsky talked about false equivalencies and we've heard virtue signaling. I think we'd get a lot further. I've been here a long time and look, when I sit about the rules of order and respect, respect is a two-way street. Someone would said that I didn't respect so-and-so and I said, well, when I feel so-and-so respects me, maybe I'll return the favor. But let, let's be careful with the, for example, Mr. Brown asked a question, whether you think his question is great or stupid or whatever, that's, that's up to you. But I mean, if I ask the fiscal person, a fiscal person a question, you're looking for a fiscal answer. I don't think Mr. Brown wants to see bridges collapse and people drown in, in the Monocacy Creek. Nor do I think Ms. Vargo Hefner wants children to eat lead paint chips and die. Those are, those are great comments and statements to make. The press will love it, the bloggers love it. As far as I'm concerned, when I hear that stuff, it almost makes me go in a different direction with a vote. So, so can we, can we just sort of be straightforward? I mean, Mr. Barron coming up and I'd said I wanted to ask him, I don't really need his opinion on, on councils, what council does or his value judgment on what we're doing or anything like that. It's a straight, they're straightforward questions for anybody, any directors. I guess I was a director when things were a little bit more, council members were a bit more abrupt and would say, I didn't ask you that damn question, you know, answer the question I asked you or sit down. We don't do that anymore. That's good. We're much more civilized. But, but still, I think that when a question's asked, if you're willing to answer it, just answer the question. You know, we don't need to get into who loves people more than the next person or, we've all been elected, we've all been elected to do a job. I, I think we should go with the assumption that we're trying to do the best we can, whether we would agree with someone or not. And it's just getting, the edge, as Mr. Myers mentioned, is, is the edge in the thing is silly. I mean, Mr. Mr. Brown was a county executive, we all know that, but he's not now. He's a council member. And, you know, that, that's what he is. And he's asking as an elective member of county council, a legislative branch, a co-equal branch. And I, I don't understand why there has to be comments made about council members, their integrity, whether they're violating this or that. My position on all of that is, if you've got something to say, say it. If you know something, bring it out. But, but don't be making accusations or alluding to something unless you've got something to back it up with. Let's try as best we can, whether we agree or disagree on any topic we're voting on, to be, not be disagreeable.
Civil.
Civil to each other. I mean, hell, I don't know if, I mean, I need to find out. I saw the letter. We're out of balance. I wanted to know what, what are we out of balance on? We can't create revenue, that is a question. But I mean, if, if there's a specific issue, Mr. Barron has said the specific issue is the, the chiller. And anything else we're doing, whether somebody likes it or not, well, that's an opinion. But I don't, I, we can't, I'm not going to vote on a budget that's out of balance. Now, I understand what he said and I understand what Mr. Brown said. Certainly, we could be making some changes and take the money somewhere. I mean, it was a time when we used to go into overtime line items and yank money or vehicles. That was a favorite spot counsel would go to at one time if they needed to find money. But you, so, so I just, I, I don't know. I, I just thought that, well, let's just stick to the topic at hand and answer the questions and save the editorial comments for the reporters and bloggers. Thank you.
Mr. Gofredo?
Mr. Kusik, before we vote on this amendment, can you explain in your own words how you see this being resolved? And do you think that if we pass this, that it will throw the budget to a point where it could get, it could get vetoed?
Oh, it could get vetoed anyway. I mean, that, that's not the issue. I think the issue here, here's what's, what's happening. There is $1 million in ARPA money that has not been assigned, okay? What this amendment does is it takes $500,000 of that and uses it to pay for the chiller. That fill, that frees up $500,000 back to the general fund that can be used for a lot of other different things. ARPA is very specific as to what we can use it for. A capital project like this at Gracemont certainly qualifies as an ARPA project. So I think that would be a good use of it. Rather than spend the money on agency nurses, okay, which is what I heard the county executive propose, spending it on a one-time capital project and freeing up that $500,000 within the general fund gives counsel a lot more options.
But John, if I may, may I?
Go ahead.
He said we've already paid for it.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. I mean, so, so it's in the budget, but it hasn't been paid for yet.
Well, there's not a chiller sitting out back that we've already paid for.
You know how that works.
It is, it is in the budget, under capital projects, which is funded from the, the general fund.
Right.
What this would do is it would fund it from ARPA, which would negate the need to allocate that $500,000 from the general fund and allow counsel or the administration to make a proposal to spend it elsewhere. The chiller project at Gracemont is an ARPA-qualified project. If you read the specifics, we have done a significant amount of projects and things at Gracemont with ARPA money. And this certainly qualifies and I believe it's a good use of the ARPA money. And ARPA money is, is, one of the recommendations that they have, if you've been at the, some of the trainings, is that it be used for one-time expenditures. The, the proposal to use it for agency nurses, that would be an ongoing expenditure that, that we've continued to see increase and increase. Now, my understanding is there are some administrative changes going on at Gracemont and that may decrease that need, hopefully. But either way, I think that this is an ARPA-qualified project and we should spend ARPA money on it and free up the money for some of the other needs that we have.
But, but John, if I may, and this is important because you're going to vote on it, for instance, I'm, I'm, I'm just referencing, you know, the administration fiscal affairs, they put our budget there.
Yeah.
The comment that if we do what you're, if we do what you're saying, we're out of sync down here saying, well, no, we're not because it's one or the other. But I just heard the man come up and say, one, you can't do that. Two, somehow it's paid or not paid for. I got, I lost some of that in the sarcasm. And three, that you can't transfer the money you want to transfer and keep it equal. That's what I heard and maybe I'm, I'm hearing it wrong.
Again, it's, it's $500,000 to pay for the chiller out of the ARPA funds. What that does is, that means we don't need to spend that money out of the general fund. That sends the money back to the general fund. That puts an excess of money into the general fund.
So ultimately, you're saying then the agency nurses would end up coming out of the general fund?
No, I think what the county executive had told us in his comments that he wanted to use that $1 million to, to pay for agency nurses or that was part of their original proposal. My thinking is that that is an ongoing expenditure. ARPA funds are one-time, it's a one-time thing. It'd be better off spent on a capital project like this chiller than an ongoing expenditure like agency nursing.
Right, the way you explain it, it doesn't put the budget out of, out of sync. So I wish somebody from fiscal could, could clarify this for me. And, and let's say I just like dropped in from, from Venus and I'm listening to all of this, but I, I did happen to get an MBA from Chicago School of Business and, and while I was visiting Earth and I sort of understand, but could you clarify this for me?
Mr. Heckman, you've been around for a long time. And it really, whenever we fund the, the capital budget, the money comes from the general fund. It is a transfer in for the project. The chiller is paid for in our capital budget.
Unless it's specific targeted funds.
So now what you're trying to do is now-
I'm not trying to do anything.
Well, what Mr. Kusik is trying to do, and his amendment would be fine, but for it is a capital expense because it's such a large item and it's a whole lot of money. So that being the case, he's touching the estimates of revenue because it is a budget transfer into the budget from the fund balance. That's all. So the chiller's paid for. If you do it the way Mr. Kusik wants to do it and target this money, you put the budget out of, you put the budget out of whack. You put the budget, you make the budget unbalanced. The chiller's already there.
All right.
I, I, there's $500,000, like Mr. Kusik said, to do other things that you might want to do as county counsel. Because that million dollars is still there. That, I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you that the, it was a courtesy to say the budget is unbalanced as opposed to letting you pass it and then say, oh, you passed an unbalanced budget. It was a courtesy to come to council and say that. That's all, that's all.
Okay. We've, we've, we've been beating this to death. We got an amendment out here we need to vote on. And we need to understand exactly what is it to vote on because somewhere along the line, I totally forgot what we were doing.
I have, well, wait, was the amendment seconded?
Yes.
Now, what was the amended?
The amendment was to not take the chiller funds from the ARPA funds and keep it as general fund capital improvements funds.
Right, it's just to strike this.
Strike that, yeah.
A yes would be to do just what you read.
Yeah, a yes would mean that we're going to use it. Right, yeah, not going to do the amendment.
Got it.
Okay.
A yes means that we will not be taking ARPA funds to pay for the chiller. We will be using the capital improvement funds that are currently in the budget.
Okay. We all clear with that? Call for the vote.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kusik?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Passes by a vote of six to two.
Leave it the way it is.
So now, that's striked.
That's stricken, yeah.
Now, now we have to vote on, Ms. Zerinsky, I mean, Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Now I want to know where we're going to replace that money from. And we have, I'm not, I'm, we struck it from that. I'm not willing to strike it from this budget as an amendment. I want us to work on finding another source because there's other sources. We could still spend ARPA money different ways and move something else. And so I'm not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So what, what, I don't, we're not going to do it that way, but there's still $500,000 that if we don't do what's proposed, we still have to address, correct?
No, 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 no. No, wait, wait. The budget has the $500,000 in it for the chiller project.
We struck that.
No, we struck using ARPA funds.
Right.
The $500,000 is still in the budget as originally proposed.
We're getting a chiller.
If I'm correct, but counsel still has control over the ARPA money, correct?
Yes, anytime ARPA money's spanked, they have to come to counsel to, for approval.
Theoretically, that money is just a million dollars still just sitting.
I want to make sure we're clear on one thing.
Can I just finish? Because I thought I had the floor.
Okay.
So the, the issue was that we were taking the money that we were moving from the chiller and putting it in another fund, which then affects all these other issues, correct?
We're paying for it twice.
Yeah. All right, as long as the other things can go through.
Clarification, where is Mr. Barron? I'm going to ask one question and hopefully it's clarified. With the striking of the $500,000, we are balanced. Is it yes or no?
Yes.
Thank God.
We can move on.
Thank you.
Pardon me? Yeah, I wanted to make sure we're clear. So now we're voting on, where are we at?
May I, may I ask a question then?
Yes, sir.
So striking that $500,000, there was COVID response grants. My understanding is that that paid for that 500. If we look up under Community and Economic Development, County Contributions Transfers?
Were you, you're talking about Org. 31055?
Yeah. 31055.
It's in a part of the paper that came.
Oh.
It was part of your packet. Yeah.
Okay, it's this spreadsheet that you have, Tara.
Oh, okay.
Okay, everybody know what we're looking at now? All right, Ms. Kusak, what's your question?
I, my understanding is that that $500,000 was allocated in, in that line item. No, I'm, I'm, never mind. Okay, that was the lead paint. I'm, you're right. I've, I've clarified.
Okay.
Never mind. I withdraw.
He's self-clarified.
Okay.
Self-checking, got it.
So we are voting on the budget as amendment.
as amended with the amendments. Are we correct? Anybody not quite sure where we're at with this? Yes, Mr. Brown.
We're voting on the amendments.
Yes.
Not the budget as amended.
The amendments first.
The amendments first.
And the amendments as a package, President.
Yes. As amended. Amendments as amended.
Can I, yeah.
When the resolution, uh, is, if the resolution's adopted, this schedule of budget revisions will be changed and capital projects will be eliminated from the sheet.
We all clear with that? Okay, that's what we're voting on. The amendments.
The budget amendments as amended.
Give me strength. Go ahead.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
No.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Where are we at now?
Adoption of the budget as amended.
We're here. Now we're, we're going to do the budget as amended. So I'm right back where I was. General fund, okay. Ms. Vary Hefner, would you read that for me, please? This one.
Resolved by the Northampton County Council, the following 2024 Northampton County budgets incorporated by reference here to, shall be adopted as amended this seventh day of December, 2023. One general fund, two special revenue funds, three capital project funds.
Discussion. Yes, Mr. Cusack.
Just one final point, and I've brought, brought this up many times before. There is still no accounting for the hydroelectric power plant grant, which is a million dollars. I'm unaware of whether or not there is in fact an agreement with the city of Easton. Uh, I've been checking their agenda. They've been debating Middle East peace instead.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just find it troubling that there's a million dollars that, uh, was without an agreement, and the money has not been budgeted for next year. We were told there was going to be an update at some point, and there has been none. Um, so I, I think, you know, based on the amendments that we've passed, I'm gonna support this. But I find that situation with the hydroelectric power plant extremely troubling, that there's a million dollars that's unaccounted for, um, that was supposed to have been spent or so, we were told was going to be spent this year. And we have, and I've seen nothing from the city of Easton regarding, uh, where that project is. And it's not budgeted for next year. So, uh, my guess is if you're gonna spend the money next year, you're gonna have to do a budget amendment. But I won't be here, so it'll be up to you. So thank you.
Wait a second.
Uh, Ms. Zirinsky, are you asking?
Are you saying, you're saying that the hydroelectric plant is not in this year's budget?
It's not.
It's in neck, no?
It's not.
It's a zero.
Twenty-four.
Wouldn't it carry over?
No.
No.
Any other discussion on this?
I mean, I would think if I may.
You may.
That the, the money that was in, that Mr. Cusick's had, is now residing in the general fund and unaccounted for.
Is that accurate?
Well, I don't know where else it would be.
It's zero on the book.
Zero on the book.
I know, but is it in the general fund in that bucket of money so that it could be drawn down if the hydroelectri-
Mr. Barron. Front and center, please. I'm going to ask the, I'm gonna ask the fiscal man.
It is not in the 2024 budget.
It is not.
If we want to do something with it beyond 2023, we have to come back to county council to talk about our plans and ask for an amendment. Mr. Heckman said he didn't want to see it. We honored that request. He didn't want to see hydroelectric money if it wasn't spent this year.
I don't want to see it if it wasn't spent.
That answers the question. It's not in the budget. They'll have to come in front of council, the next council, which, Mr. Cusack, I won't be here either. With that said, let's vote on the option amendment.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Adoption of the 2024 capital improvement plan. Mr. Gofredo, that falls in your realm. Would you introduce that? Capital projects.
I think I can handle this one.
Okay.
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the proposed 2024 Northampton County capital improvement plan shall be adopted on this seventh day of December, 2023.
Discussion. Call for the vote.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Adoption of the 2024 real estate tax millage rate ordinance. Ms. Zirinsky and Ms. Vary Hefner inter, interceded this on November 16th. Tara, you want to read it? Since your name popped up first.
Sure. It is hereby ordained and acted, enacted that the millage rate for real estate tax purposes for the year 2024 shall be set at 10.8 mils on every dollar of assessed valuation of taxable real estate or $1.08 on every $100 of assessed valuation. This ordinance was advertised on the whatever day, December 2023, was adopted by Northampton County Council, possibly on this day in 2023.
It's blank.
Done.
All right. Discussion.
On the blank day.
On a blank day.
Always on the blank day.
We have a public hearing on that. And you'll discuss it the next meeting. No?
No, we're vo, we're voting on this. We, we, this is the public discussion.
I am tired.
It is okay.
Any public discussion?
No, we're doing it.
Counsel?
Brandon Dunstain's sneaking out.
Call for the vote. I am not here.
You got it.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo. Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Are there any, is there any other old business?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma, yes, sir. I would ask or, or encourage the administration to get together with the planning commission. I know we did not approve the extra money they asked for, and I, I don't know if I would have voted for it if it had come up for a vote tonight. Meeting started with Mr. Barron coming up and explaining to us that our planning commission, with our director, uh, was getting too much money and making too much money and all kinds of things. Uh, I don't know what the future bodes and that maybe we should do things ourselves. Right now, we don't, so I really would like us to try and have a dialogue. I don't know if anybody cares, but I care. And I, before we, I would ever approve anything to end a relationship, I'd, I'd like to know that there was a complete dialogue with, with the planning commission on, on their requests. I get it, uh, as far, as far as pay goes. I mean, we did get the information we requested. I could point to a lot of agencies where I don't agree with the pub, the money, public one way or another, that's going to some of their people, but it is what it is. Uh, I, I just think that before we make any rash decisions, that we really have to have a sincere discussion with our top people and, and the planning commission. That's all. That's all I had, Mr. President. Just an appeal. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, we still have new business.
Yeah. Any other old business at all? Okay, let's move to new business. Consideration of a 2024 County Council Meeting Schedule Resolution. Ms. Vary Hefner.
She's got a sore throat, I think, by now.
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that in accordance with Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 206A, the Northampton County Council Organizational Meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, and will begin at 3:30 PM prevailing time in the third floor meeting room, room 3116, Northampton County Government Center, 669 Washington Street, Easton, Pennsylvania. And to the regular schedule of the meetings for the year 2024, shall be conducted on the first and third Thursday of each respective month, beginning at 6:30 PM prevailing time in the third floor meeting room, room 3116, Northampton County Government Center, 669 Washington Street, Easton, Pennsylvania, with the following exceptions. The meeting scheduled for Thursday, July 4th, 2024 is canceled and rescheduled for Wednesday, July 3rd, 2024. The meeting scheduled for Thursday, December 19th, 2024 is canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, December 12th, 2024, and will begin at 4:30 PM prevailing time, and will be held in the third floor meeting room, room 3116, Northampton County Government Center, 669 Washington Street, Easton, Pennsylvania.
Discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Wait, I have, she has a discussion. So. It is my understanding that swearing in is at 3:30 PM, is it not, on Ja, January 2nd? So if, if, if swearing in is at 3:30, how are you gonna start the meeting at 3:30, right? Like, that's an issue. Maybe make it an hour later?
Well, because we don't know when the thing will end, the swearing in ceremony.
But you do know it's gonna start at 3:30. So if you start the meeting at 3:30, you guarantee that they're not gonna be here. You know what I'm saying?
It's been like that since I've been here. We always said 3:30.
No, I remember us amending it one year. I remember being able to come up here and go to a reorg meeting.
Right, you do that after the swearing in.
It doesn't state that, though, is what she's saying. It's saying that our meeting will begin at 3:30.
We can amend it if somebody wants to amend.
So should we state, um, subsequent to the swearing in ceremony?
Yes.
On that date?
Yes.
We'll make the amendment.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that amendment if I can. I'm also not comfortable with doing the meeting on July 3rd. Can we move it to the 11th, the following week? Is there any reason that we can't do?
Yes, there is.
You can't.
Uh, I'll tell you.
Well, I asked a question.
Well, yes, the, the reason is that if you want to have an ordinance introduced, you need two weeks in order to do the advertising and then vote on it. So that's why you want to have it in sometime that week. You need that, you need that week for the staff to advertise and, um, get, get the things together for the meeting.
We can make it for that Tuesday?
I was just trying to get it off that week. So if we can't, and there's no way to do it, unless you want to make, can we, we, we can't alter it to the second and the fourth that month?
You can't alter this. Oh, you can, but it's the second.
But then you run into the first meeting of August.
All right, leave it alone. I, then I'll withdraw.
Not your entire amendment, just that portion.
Just that portion.
Just to clarify. There you go. Okay, great.
Thank you, Tara.
Let's go. It's night time.
What were you amending?
Just the, um, time of. The organization. The reorg will begin subsequent to the swearing in ceremony.
And you, you introduced that motion, who seconded?
No, Tara introduced it, and I seconded it.
That's what I thought.
We good?
I'm good, yeah, let's go.
Are we? Call for vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Sure.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Consideration of resolution accepting a donation Consideration of resolution accepting a donation for Christmas presents for Gracel residents. Mr. Giovanni.
Sure, Mr. Pettis. Whereas Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 202, 10, provides that the county council shall have, among others, the following powers, to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance by any agency on behalf of the county of other gifts. And now therefore be hereby resolved that Northampton County Council authorizes the Department of Human Services, Gracel, to accept $1,500 from the Friends of Gracel Foundation to be used to purchase Christmas gifts for the residents.
Discussion. Can we vote on it?
Yep, I think we can.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Margot Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Consideration of a resolution creating a standing election committee of Northampton County Council. Mr. Gofredo, would you read the resolution, please?
Can I pick it up from now therefore be resolved, or should I read the whole? Now therefore be resolved as follows. Northampton County Council hereby establishes a standing committee known as the Election Committee, consisting of four members of council, to be appointed by the president of Northampton County Council, including the appointment of chair of the committee. Members of council as appointed by the president of Northampton County Council shall serve on the election committee for a period of one year. Two, the election committee shall meet not less than quarterly in each year and shall comply in all respects with all applicable laws and regulations, including but not limited to the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. Number three, the election committee shall be bound by the Northampton County Home Rule Charter, the Northampton County Administrative Code, and any and all applicable federal, state law and regulations.
Discussion.
I have a question.
You sure can answer it.
Is there, I understand the motive, absolutely. Is there not a reason that that function could not be served by our governance committee, which already exists?
That's a very good question. If that question's directed to me, I, first of all, I guess.
To the body.
As the, as the person asked Mrs. Spadoni to draft this, specifically, I would like, and maybe I'll make an amendment, to amend the title of the committee to the Election Integrity Committee. As we both had the chair of the Democratic and Republican committees here, both parties see a real need in Northampton County to address some significant issues that we've had, not just this year, but in years past with how we're conducting our elections. I don't know if this committee will have to stand for year after year after year. I'm hoping we can make some significant changes to how we're doing things and hopefully alleviate the need for this committee. But I do think that this committee should be separate from the governance committee to have a very specific task at hand of ensuring and reassuring that our elections are held with integrity in this county.
Any, Ms. Zirinsky?
So we need a second to the motion.
We need a second to the motion.
Yeah, I guess, can I make the motion to rename the committee the Election Integrity Committee?
I'll, I'll second the motion for the sake of discussion. So my, my question is, is this in direct conflict with the Election Commission? Because there is already an elected commission that's supposed to oversee the elections. Is this a function of? Shouldn't this be their function? And is county council overstepping its bounds in forming this committee? Or should this be like an ad hoc committee? Because if it's not a standing committee that's going to be perpetual, wouldn't this be an ad hoc committee?
I'm going to let the solicitor answer that question.
As you heard, I've had significant discussions with Mr. Gofredo about this.
Right.
And if you look at the entire resolution, it recognizes the Election Commission because they are charged
Right.
by the Home Rule Charter and Administrative Code to run the elections. This is for oversight. And the discussion, without breaching any confidence with Mr. Gofredo, and I'm sure he allowed me to do this, it gives council the right to inquire. Sometimes we ask questions, and we heard one time, I think the phrase was exactly, "It's all good." Well, apparently.
But you can inquire. You can go to those Election Commission meetings, can you not? They're public.
And it all, it also gives council the right for oversight. And the corollary that I had with Mr. Gofredo was Congress looking over the business of this country. They don't run the election. They don't have any contact with the Election Commission. They don't tell them what to do. They don't tell the administration what to do. But they have the right to inquire to be sure that all applicable regulations and the voter registration and the elections are run as best we can.
But do we not have that right already as an elected body? We just didn't ask the right questions to the person that was going to give us the answers. That's what I think. I mean, yeah, we, Charles Myers sat up here and gave us like a two-sentence answer, and it was insufficient, obviously. You know, now looking back, maybe, maybe those inquiries should have been more in-depth. So why form a whole nother committee where there's a commission charged with this very responsibility? I'm just trying to understand it.
I understand that. We have the discussion. I'm neither arguing for or against. I'm telling you what you can and cannot do. The decision is yours as an elected official.
So you're saying that you can, and it is legal, in your opinion, as a solicitor, to do this?
Absolutely. Oversight by Northampton County Council, the legislative body of Northampton County, pursuant to the Home Rule Charter and the Administrative Code.
Ms. Varu Hefner.
So.
Have you, I'm sorry, are you done, Tara?
I am done, thank you.
I won't, I'm not going to forget you, Mr. Heckman, but I'm going to Ms. Varu Hefner.
So I just looked up, because I asked the question about, could it not be covered under governance? I see where the difference is between the Election Commission and not. I have no issue with that, because they serve their purpose, and we could still serve oversight and make our own decisions.
Yes.
CCAP has what they call the Election Reform Committee. So CCAP does have a separate committee there. So I think it's just up to us to say, do we want to do this, you know, as council and really focus on it? Or do you want to have a separate elections committee? And I'm good either way. I just wanted to know if it was extraneous, that's all.
Mr. Heckman, before I go back over that way.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Counsel has the right to create any committee it wants. We just do. It's not a, we, I don't care what they say out there. We can create any committee. We, we changed your name of your committee, remember, when you first got on?
I know. We created an ad hoc committee.
You said, you said, can I have environmental? I said, whatever you want, we'll put it on the front. So, I mean, you know, we could have the dirt road committee. We could have all kinds of committees. So, so, I mean, no, it, it, we have a large, and I think the solicitor would agree, large breadth of, of tolerance is given to this legislative body for committees. The question, I think, is whether you want a specific committee looking at the elections and what. Now, I think in other times I might go, well, really? But given what has happened, and given what we've heard from the chairs of the two parties, given what we're looking towards in 2024, I don't think this is being created with any malice aforethought. I think it's appropriate. There's nothing wrong with it. And frankly, I think it, it's, it's specific and looking at a specific thing, and I'm going to support it because I, I think that it's, you know, it's a fine use of what we do. We certainly can't, look, to this day, I thought I understood what the Election Commission has the power to do. And I'm, as of today, I'm a little bit confused at times. I mean, I know they certify it at the end of the day, but do they have any other duties? I mean, they approve the machine or make recommendations? But it's, it seems like it's really run by administration. So he's proposing a specific committee that, yes, you can ask. We've already had, where we've done things in committees, and we've had a committee of the whole. Like, we've said, okay, hey, this is something that's come up. Let's have, I think with 911, we would do that a few times. There is so much going on. We said, this will be a committee of the whole. And we just, council as a whole would be, we're not taking official action, but we're having a, and his committee isn't going to take any official action. All it can do is make recommendations, like any other committee. So, so that's, that's why I'm going to support it. I, I don't see a problem with it. I see no harm, no foul, no harm.
This side of the room, Mr. Kuzak.
Yeah, I would just tag on to what Lori had said. At CCAP, elections were initially under the county governance umbrella. And because there were so many issues related to that, it was spun off to its own committee. And I think that's what I believe Mr. Gofredo's intention is here. And I intend to support it. And I think the fact that both of the party chairs were here today, I think is a good sign. And, and I hope this heads in the right direction, and we can resolve some of these issues that were, were raised by them today.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I, I believe I understand Mr. Gofredo's intention of setting up a standalone committee, echoing what Mr. Heckman said. I mean, we're entering a 2024 election cycle. We don't have all the answers to the problems in 2023. Those are still pending. And I think when you look further down the road, we're looking at potentially changing the method of voting, whether it be the machines or how that may happen down the road. Probably not going to happen in 2024, but a new contractor or service provider for that. So I see this committee actually getting, there's quite a lot of parts, if you would, that I can see them really weighing in on and making sure it has the proper focus and vetting. As I think the solicitor said, asking the questions, being able to get more in-depth, at least for a period of time. And I can see that window of time being at least the next four years easily, until we are able to go back and, and then maybe morph it back under governance if need be. But for the time being, I think it would be a strongly recommended committee to establish for this body. So we get the answers, and we can inquire before. We're always inquiring after the fact. This is about being proactive and having those questions upfront and having a vehicle in order to do that with focus. So I'll support the recommendation.
Anybody from this side? Nobody else from this side? Yes, Ms. Zirinsky.
So I guess my only concern is that in putting a separate committee out that's not the governance committee, because now you're requiring four more people to sit on another committee besides the governance committee, and then you have a commission. So some of the information might get fragmented. Do you know what I mean? In terms of just having so many people to report to or so many, so many options. I don't know if that strengthens or weakens the, the process. And I, I can see it going both ways in that you would have a committee of people who would be getting more information. But I, I don't see why it would serve to be anything more than redundant of people going to the Election Commission meeting or going to the governance meeting.
If I may.
Hold on a second. Mr. Heckman was going to respond when Tara was done.
Yeah, I mean, I do.
He wants to respond first.
I would, I would simply say, as county council, we have legislative authority. If we now focus our energies into the election with the Election Integrity Committee, we could then pass things up to a county council meeting to possibly help aid in making our elections better, whether, are you all right? You look scared.
Uh, no.
Aileen, is she okay?
Is Aileen okay?
Oh, shoot. What's the matter? Did she fall asleep or did she pass out? Get the sheriff. Come here.
No, yeah, come in here.
She looks scared now. You okay?
Oh, okay.